Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the South Haven City Council. Today is Monday, October 21st, 2024. This meeting is called to order. This evening's invocation is by Ahmad Goodwin from Holy Temple.
Heavenly Father, we're all so thankful and we're also grateful for another opportunity to come together as a community, God. We ask that you bless us all tonight. We ask that you bless this meeting and we ask that you continue to bless us with unity and the bonds of peace, God. We ask that you continue to give us a mind to love our neighbors as we love ourselves. We ask all these things in your Son Jesus' name by saying, "Thank God." Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Megan, could we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hasley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Annie Brown.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda with an addition to the community update. It'd be six D, a recognition of shout.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes and the agenda is approved. It's time for a community update. Kate.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have a proclamation in recognition of the life and service of James O. Wilkins, Jr., and I believe that there's some members of council who will be reading that proclamation.
Thank you.
City of South Haven, Michigan offers Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas James Olin Wilkins, Jr., affectionately known as Jimmy, made his spiritual transition on Thursday, July 4th, 2024, in Ypsilanti, Michigan, surrounded by his beloved family and...
Whereas Jimmy was born October 28th, 1956, in South Haven, Michigan, the eldest of nine children, blessed the late James O. Wilkins, Sr., and Shirley Wilkins, and...
Whereas Jimmy's early life was marked by an unwavering commitment to academic excellence, leadership, and community involvement, graduating with honors from South Haven Elsie Moore High School in 1974. Jimmy was a proud member of the National Honor Society and the marching band and the varsity tennis team, and...
Whereas Jim went on to pursue higher education, earning a Bachelor of Arts degree in political science and government from Hope College in 1978. His professional journey began at an early age, progressing from a customer service assistant at AMP Grocery Store to an esteemed quality control manager at Bo Aluminum and Brass Incorporated, and...
Whereas Jimmy's career flourished, and after relocating to Canton, Michigan in 1990, he continued to demonstrate his exceptional leadership as a principal consultant for the big three auto manufacturers and later as Vice President at ASI International. Driven by his entrepreneurial spirit, Jimmy founded Standard Components Incorporated, SSCI, where he served as President and CEO for 15 years, leading the company to a great and success, and...
Whereas under Jimmy's visionary leadership, SCI became one of America's fastest-growing businesses, earning recognition in Forbes Top 500 Magazine in 2007. His dedication to excellence was further honored with the Edward Lowe Foundation's Award for Michigan's 50 Companies to Watch in 2010, and...
Whereas Jimmy acquired a robust set of professional skills during his career that included leadership, Six Sigma Master Black Belt Certification, quality management, advanced product quality planning, production part approval process, PPAP, and many others, where and...
Whereas Jim's leadership legacy extends beyond his professional achievements. He was the protector and guide and a source of strength for his family. He embraced his faith, attending Resurrection Life Ministry in South Haven when visiting and accepted God as the Lord and Savior, and...
Whereas Jimmy, known for his intellect, kindness, and dedication to his family and community, retired in 2016 to a well-deserved life of leisure, enjoying his passions for sports and games, and spending time with loved ones, and...
Jimmy is lovingly remembered by his devoted wife of 30 years, Patricia Wilkins, his siblings, children, grandchild, great-grandchild, great-grandchildren, extended family, and a multitude of friends. His presence in their lives has been a blessing, and his love, leadership, and laughter will be deeply missed, and...
Now therefore be it resolved that the City of South Haven celebrates the life of James Olin Wilkins, Jr., for his many contributions to his community and his dedication to his family and the love he shared with all. His legacy will continue to inspire and uplift those whose lives he's touched. Signed, Annie Brown, Mayor.
What a wonderful family, the Wilkins family, and it reminds me of my family a little bit. We have eight children, all who graduated from South Haven and went off to college and are productive citizens, and I just admire what the Wilkins families have done. I want to start off to say that I am running again for Van Buren County Commissioner, District One, and I was raised here, went away to college, went to New York for a little while, and came back, and it's been my privilege to serve my community, and I would like to continue that for the next four years. I have always had three priorities since I began. One of them is making sure that we have adequate mental health services in our county. The other is to take care of our most vulnerable residents, our youth and seniors, and also economic development. I think soon as I was elected, shortly after I was elected, I know I talked to your city councilman, Reiser, we had a meeting between business, which you represented, the business element, and county government, Brian DeSette, someone from Conexus, and later on, Market Van Buren was created. Not that that one meeting did it, but that was the vision that they had. And so those are my top three priorities, and as you know, I continue to let the residents know about those items. One of the things that we have talked about in the county government is a facilities master plan. As you know, our county courthouse is very old, and it's in much need of repair. We hope to, in the future, talk about do we build a new county courthouse and use the old courthouse for administrative offices or like a museum, and so we're looking for ideas. The plan would probably be for the next 50 years. It would take that long to make sure we get the funding. But we have decided at our last meeting to have Tower Pinkster write the facilities master plan for us, and we have another vote tomorrow to solidify that. Also, the Van Buren County Housing Target Market Analysis with Sharon Woods from the Land Use USA has been completed, and I'm not sure if your mayor or city manager have that, do you have that information yet? Okay, because that was a study that can give you more information on what housing types that you can target for your community. So I can make sure that Lisa Ranslers sends that information to you. Also, we had a vote to reappoint Wayne Nelson and Reverend Askew to the Road Commission, and we'll have a final vote this Tuesday. We have a digital information department, and we have been finding out about AI. I was at a meeting at the Chamber of Commerce when they started talking about AI in the past, and I brought that up before the county, and our chairman said, "Well, let's look into it." So our GIS department looked into it, and they felt that they would change the whole name of the department and have a digital information department. If you go on our website, vanburencountymi.gov, you can go down to the digital information department and listen to the chatbots that tell you about what's going on in the county. And so take a look at that. That's very interesting. I just wanted to mention a couple of things that are going on in your community that you might want to share with your residents. Food distribution is going to be October 23rd from 4:00 to 7:00, and that's going to be at the Van Buren County DHHS. If you'd like to volunteer, they need volunteers, and I'm going to give this flyer to Kate. The head of the household must be present, and there's no more than two households per vehicle. No motorcycles, so don't ride your motorcycle. Trunks must be empty, and flu vaccines and other services will also be available. Then the Van Buren County Stand Down, this is for veterans, October 25th, Friday, 10 to 2, at the Decatur VFW. That's 560 North Phelps Street in Decatur, and there will be a lot of information and services tables there. Also, there's giveaways, information about disabilities, healthcare, employment, and heat and utilities. And the veteran has to bring a government-issued picture ID, and they're also encouraged to bring their DD 214 or VA ID. And I think that is about all I was going to share today, except for info line. I think I've passed these out before or mentioned it over the past years. Region 4, Area Agency on Aging, has an info line, so it's for any seniors or those who are disabled, and it's 1-800-654-2810. You can, if you have a senior that you're caring for, if you're a caregiver and you want to get support, you can call that number. You can find out what are all the different services available to you. And yesterday at the board meeting, they discussed dementia care, and if you have anyone who's facing dementia care and needs to be evaluated or needs help maneuvering through getting the right care, just call this number. So I'll leave this also. And thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Any questions?
No. Okay, thank you.
Next, an update on the Palisades Nuclear Plant by Holtech International. Nick Kulp and the Honorable McMidah.
You got a twofer, so it's not a bad deal. Thank you very much for having us, and I'd just like to start by saying we appreciate the support from the City of South Haven, both the council and local residents, to help make the restart possible. It's pretty unbelievable how far we've come since we last spoke to this group formally. We've seen most of you out at community events, but where we are today is pretty remarkable, and that couldn't happen without your support. Rehiring is going very well. We're around 530 employees today, which is 300 more than where we started at the beginning of this year. Many of those are from here in Van Buren County, about a third are Van Buren residents, and the largest share are from here in the City of South Haven. So that's very exciting news for South Haven and Covert Township. Restart activities are well underway. We're doing inspections, equipment upgrades, maintenance, all sorts of activities. So I don't know if you have anything else, Mick?
Oh, a lot more.
Okay, a lot more. He told me to be brief.
I told him. He's got to go first because he knows how much I like to talk. But there's like three or four main components here. One is the money to restart the plant. That's a large one. And the federal government and state government has been very supportive of that, and the owner of Holtech is coughing up about $400 million of his own money. The total price tag is something a little north of things go like we're planning now, a little close, a little above $2 billion. That's a lot of money, but you're getting a lot of generation, 800 megawatts. And so that's important, the money to start it, and then how do you pay it back? And we've identified a buyer for our electric, the 800 megawatts, for the next 25 to 30 years, and that's at a price that'll allow us to continue to operate the plant, pay the employees, and pay back the loan. And that's a 25 to 30 year with a bump at that. So everything is going pretty good. In South Haven here, one of the real pluses is some of the employees that did not go south with energy stayed here, and they have come back to the plant, and we're using several of them as educators to teach the new employees how to operate the plant safely. And as we move through all these things, we talk about all these issues. The main issue is safety. That plant, we have to be able to come to you folks and look you in the eye, and these folks, and look them in the eye, and make sure that all the mechanisms there are a go, and we can make a commitment to operate that plant safely. And also, I would be remiss, your city manager, your mayor, council people have been, you know, some of them have attended meetings with the Department of Energy, with the Nuclear Regulatory Committee Commission, and we're very appreciative of that. Thank you.
We'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
I have one question. I don't know if this is the right phrasing, but I know you said there was a buyer for the next 25 years. Does that stay locally, or how far can you service?
Sure, so great question. As Mick said, having that revenue stream was essential, not only to pay back our loan, and it is a loan, we like to, it's not one of those fake loans that you don't have to pay back, it's a real loan, to pay that back with interest, but also to be able to reinvest into the plant for decades, the workforce, the equipment. So we have two off-takers. One is Wolverine Power. In our community, you'd probably know them as Midwest Energy and Communications. They're one of the partners. They're a Michigan nonprofit rural power cooperative. And then they have another partner, that's the minority share off-taker, which is Hoosier Energy, and both importantly operate within MISO, which is the same like portion of the electric grid. So the power goes out, but that's who the buyers are.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good to see you.
Yep, thank you.
Next, we have recognitions for shout with Bob Copping.
Good evening. We vote in elections like this once every four years, but when we volunteer, we vote every day about the kind of community we want to live in. Volunteering is the ultimate exercise in democracy. David Brooks with the New York Times writes, "Of the second mountain, the first mountain is the one we climb when making a living, raising a family. The second mountain, the second part of life, focuses on our opportunity to help our community and help others." This evening, we focus on three shout members who in 10 years of climbing that second mountain have excelled in working toward making a great community even better. They are Mark and Lorraine Adland, who have managed the beautiful Bridge Begonias viewed by thousands for the last 10 years, and belatedly recognizing Sue Cunningham, who managed the Shout Cottage Walk, again attended by thousands for more than 10 years. The Darburg Begonias, Mark and Lorraine Adland, have reigned or shined many times with volunteers, which they had to find, placed planters' soil, replaced planters' soil, planted begonias, replaced pillaged and purling begonias, fertilized, watered, even devised a new automatic watering system, and removed flowers at the season end, then at holiday time decorated with bose greens. All this for 10 years. Sue Cunningham, the Shout Cottage Walk, she deftly managed the cottage walk for so many years, so many that I can't keep track, more than 10, thousands attended, for many a first visit to South Haven that they repeated. Sue excelled at finding volunteer helpers for Cottage Walk, advertising, sponsorships, promotional materials, creating a map of homes, which was always easy, and worrying about rain, but it never did. By the way, Shout can still use more homes volunteered for the 2025 Cottage Walk and a new chairperson, too. Mary, if you please.
Will we take a picture now?
Pardon?
Will we take a picture with the plaques?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to come up here?
It is now public comment time for items on the agenda excluding items scheduled for public hearing, and you have up to five minutes.
Nancy Knott, 125 Elkenberg. $13 million, 20 years of remediation and counting. That is the amount of money and time the state of Michigan has spent at the factory condos to contain the carcinogen trichloroethylene, and the work is not done. Last December, members of Eagle, geologists, and environmental engineers held a Zoom meeting with the association to let us know that more remediation is needed. Much to our surprise, the trichloroethylene we thought was contained is still migrating to neighbors to the north and west of us and also into Lake Michigan. They will be trying a new technique called polishing to capture and stop the migration, and our property and daily lives once again will be interrupted. Living like this for the past 20 years has taken its toll. the developer." Why was this misleading document used with words like "previous environmental problems" versus "current environmental problems"? Why wasn't the document by the experts at Fishbeck used in the RFP? A developer has a right to know what they are up against and what is going to be required legally. This is going to be a daunting project environmentally. The Overton property is adjacent and contiguous with, I quote, "one of the most polluted sites in the state of Michigan," according to retired Environmental Quality Assistant Director Supervisor Frank Ballow. A letter was written to Jeff Hawkins, to Griffin Graham, and in that letter, or email, I should say, he writes, "The factory condominium file shows contamination in excess of Eagle standards migrating onto the Overton property. I have lived through 20 years of remediation and condo-associated costs. I know the ramifications of toxic exposure through my education in laboratory science and doing cancer research. I look at all of you tonight and wonder why you have not reached out to the residents of the factory condos for our input. Instead, you use the site in Kalamazoo and gather information to support your narrative. The extent of contamination is very different. 1 million in Kalamazoo versus 13 million here, to be exact, for the remediation."
Give one minute.
"I would have pointed out the letter from MISTHA where Mr. Lance stated, and I quote, 'Insufficient data and analysis has been provided to support this former industrial site can be effectively remediated to be compatible with residential housing. We are repeating some of the same mistakes of the past. I support affordable housing in our city, but I am concerned about this property. I am concerned that potential and current residents will be exposed to the same risks and health hazards as the factory condo residents. One of our residents has passed away due to a rare bile duct cancer, and I am being monitored for two tumors on my liver. My goal has always been to look at the facts and measure the risks versus the benefits of this project. With all the variable facts that I have presented tonight, I am asking that you do not go down the road of blind optimism and personal agendas.'"
Thank you.
Kate Engelbrecht, 125 Elkenberg Street. Tonight, I'm speaking regarding the RFP for the Overton property at 229 Elkenberg Street. Long-term, affordable, and attractive workforce housing is desperately needed in South Haven. The Overton property has the potential to be the location for this housing. The previous MISTHA proposal by the Habitat Company was not successful for a variety of reasons. With only a cursory review, MISTHA found multiple deficiencies in Habitat's proposal, agreeing with concerns expressed numerous times by residents regarding Habitat's proposal, including lack of sufficient parking, lack of an onsite playground, and lack of laundry facilities. MISTHA also strongly supported the residents' focus on environmental assessment, plans, and action missing from Habitat's proposal. The city should have listened, respected, and acted on the repeated environmental concerns expressed by informed and knowledgeable residents. Instead, city staff dug in their heels and ignored this valuable input. The city of South Haven certainly does not want a future developer to repeat the mistakes made by Habitat, nor should the city repeat its missteps made in the previous process. In the Process and Environmental Issues section of the city's proposal, the environmental concerns are treated almost as an afterthought. By repeatedly referring to previous contamination, the city is downplaying the actual existing confirmed contamination located on Overton. It trivializes the actual environmental condition of the property's highly contaminated status. It serves no purpose and harms the outcome of the new project when facts are not openly given to potential developers. Why make a potential developer think the environmental concerns will be a mere inconvenience? Why not give potential developers the known contaminated status of the property? There is nothing to be gained by hiding information and forcing potential developers to discover this information on their own. Better to let the developers know from the beginning what they will be undertaking with this project. In the long run, full disclosure of the extent of contamination will save both time and money. In the Schedule for Review and Selection section, I find the timeline of seven months to be overly optimistic and, in all practicality, unrealistic. How can site plan and incentive review begin before a finalist is chosen? Less than four weeks' time between finalist notification and the presentation may be insufficient from the developer's perspective. This may impact if the developer submits a quality and complete proposal. The one-month time specified to finalize terms of redevelopment and purchase agreement does not give the city adequate time for study and review. The city's attorney will need to thoroughly review and approve all documents prior to plans being submitted to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission meets only once per month. If the Planning Commission has questions, concerns, or requires revision, that will delay the process by a minimum of one month. A public hearing must be scheduled, noticed, and held. City council will need to approve the terms and purchase agreement. If the city council sends the matter back to city staff, the developer or the Planning Commission, the timeline will be delayed.
Give one minute.
There is also no time allocated for MISTHA approval prior to the construction beginning. How can that happen? I hope city staff has indeed learned from their disregard for residents' concerns and knowledge and will listen with open minds and hearts. I respectfully request city council appoint at least one resident of the factory condos to the evaluation committee. Several current residents have lived with the effects and the risks of a contaminated site for 20 years and will provide valuable firsthand experience with the problems unmitigated environmental contamination can cause residents of South Haven. Thank you.
Real quickly, I want to thank Mayor Brown and our city manager, Kate Hoosier, and the council for recognizing the contribution that my brother made to this city and the life that he lived to try to uplift others and the accomplishments that he were able to achieve in just a short period of time. Jimmy was one that didn't like to be pointed out. He was always taking a backseat, but he was always focused on trying to make life better for others. Thank you for that. You're here tonight, although I appreciate the time and effort that many have put in to come up with a long laundry list of things on why this RFP is wrong and why we shouldn't move forward with the Overton project. But frankly, I just think it's very selfish in a lot of ways. Déjà vu. Déjà vu, déjà vu. It's the same old story that we heard for the last two, three years. It's the same act being played out again. It's a scare tactic, although I appreciate the stories. Help me out, Kate. At the school, Eagle, you put together, the staff put together, professional individuals from Eagle, and who else?
Jimmy D.C.
Yes. You had all the main parts there, stakeholders, right? And that went out to the city residents to come to the high school, voice all your concerns. That went out. It was under-attended. Very few residents showed up. I was there. But tonight, we'll get a laundry, a whole bunch of them that will come up and have this laundry list of things that they think is wrong when they had the opportunity to have their questions answered by people that do this for a living. Zone 32, the project in Ben Harbor, all these projects had contamination. The guy from Eagle said, "There is nothing that will stop this project from being done in a way of contamination." He's seen worse in other parts of the state, worse. Kalamazoo project has a lot of stuff in way of contamination that the Overton project, I went there personally. Councilwoman Anuki went there personally. They had similar contamination. And they really did a lot of things that they didn't have to do when they found out, when they did the testing afterward, they didn't have to put the bear in and things like that. So I think it's very selfish in a way that we don't want to bring affordable housing or workforce housing to this area when you see the homeless rate going up in this city. So I don't want this, the residents are sitting here tonight, and you all to be shaken by the negativities, the negative stuff that we hear tonight in regards to contamination, although I respect what people have gone through. We've heard that story over and over and over again. Let's move forward with this RFP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Peet and Poll, 125 Elkenberg. And I would like the city to take the pollution very seriously. I have lived with that pollution for 20 years. My granddaughter was three when we were in the pool in the backyard and saw men with hazmat suits going in our backyard. That's the first time we learned about pollution. Last, she is now 22, and last week, the hazmat suits were in our backyard again. Not selfishly, they were trying to help us again, and hopefully, the new project will be wonderful and will stop the mitigation of the stuff going in there. But I would like you to take it seriously. It's not going to happen overnight. This is 20-some years that we've lived with this. We do not want the new residents, whoever they may be, to, that are going to live in the Overton project, to have to go through what we did. Personally, we had air quality containers every four months in our condo. And if those had come back negatively, we would have had to move out of our condo and find another place to live. Thank heaven, they were fine. We were always fine. But we've lived with that. We've lived with them drilling holes in our closets, in our patios, in our hallways to monitor the pollution. We've lived with the cost of the mitigation, and we've liked to take this very seriously. I don't care who lives next door to me, and I'm not a selfish person. I am concerned about them. I don't want them to have to go through what we did. I want this pollution cleaned up before they move in, not after. The proposal for, that last time, they divided it into three parcels and cleaned it up was, as far as I'm concerned, very ridiculous to expose everybody to that continual pollution. So I would like to have you seriously consider how you're going to do this, and with our safety as your prime, as your prime concern, the safety of the citizens of South Haven. Thank you.
Lisa Vek, 879 Monroe Boulevard. I don't usually read when I'm up here, because I get too nervous, but I'm going to give it a shot here. This is from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, and I don't think that it has to do with being selfish. I think it has to do with caring about people and wanting safety and health where they live. This was the application, and this is the exact wording on it under the environmental. The application is for the first of three planned phases, five to seven acres, or approximately one-third of the larger site area. "Insufficient data and analysis has been provided to support that this former industrial site, A, can be effectively remediated to be compatible with residential housing, and that, B, the sequential redevelopment scheme being proposed and redeveloped, presumably after occupancy, the next phase would start, and finally, the third phase can be done safely. If impacts are significant," and they list a whole bunch of different metals, "can be done safely. It has not been proved. The phased redevelopment may not be feasible and is statewide remediation approach considered. These issues must be fully addressed before the next application to MISTHA." I have a list here, and anyone can get a copy of this. I have the entire report from MISTHA. I would be happy to email it or give it to you in person. There's 11 chemicals here, cancer-causing. All of them are over the water, ground level, over the air, and over the ground itself, direct contact levels. In Kalamazoo, there were two. These is 17, and they're very high numbers. And recently, in Chicago, I don't know if anybody follows that, but they tried to build on a brownfield in Brighton Park for immigrants, 29 million they put into it. And then they discovered that it was a brownfield, and it was unsafe. I agree that we need workforce housing. I would like to see this project go forward. I would like to see it done safely, and I think it can be done safely. But in the RFP, I think we need to be open and honest with developers, because we'll be the same place that we were two years ago. We're going to go back, and we're going to keep fighting over it, and nothing will move forward. The developers should know upfront what they need to do so that you get a quality developer, somebody that can handle this. You don't get a Habitat that folds halfway through. I am very much for workforce housing. I've been up here and talked about it numerous times, but the contaminants are not something to play around with, and I don't think it's fair to put residents, people, there's kids on that path. The Van Buren Trail goes right through it. It's not just residents that live right near there. It's people all around, wherever the air is blowing around and stuff. The air quality is proven to be over what's allowed, and now we're going to dig it up and do nothing. So I would very much like to see the request for proposal be honest and open, and so we can get a developer and move the project forward. Thank you.
Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway. I'd like to congratulate Bishop Wilkins' family for their proclamation today. And I also wanted to say that I support Ryan and Mandy's Emily Life Saving Robot. I think the city, it would be a great help to the city and for lifesaving on the beaches. Also, I want to support all the women that talked already about trichloroethylene. I live two blocks south of Belgravia, which is factory lofts, a block south of Overton. I live across the street from Phase Two for trailside, okay? There's trichloroethylene in all three The developers should know upfront what they need to do so that you get a quality developer, somebody that can handle this. You don't get a Habitat that folds halfway through. I am very much for workforce housing. I've been up here and talked about it numerous times, but the contaminants are not something to play around with. And I don't think it's fair to put residents, people, there's kids on that path. The Van Buren Trail goes right through it. It's not just residents that live right near there. It's people all around, wherever the air is blowing around and stuff. The air quality is proven to be over what's allowed, and now we're going to dig it up and do nothing. So I would very much like to see the request for proposal be honest and open, and so we can get a developer and move the project forward. Thank you.
Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway. I'd like to congratulate Bishop Wilkins' family for their proclamation today. And also wanted to say that I support Ryan and Mandy's Emily lifesaving robot. I think the city, it's, it would be a great help to the city and for lifesaving on the beaches. Also, I want to support all the women that talked already about trichloroethylene. I live two blocks south of Belgravia, which is Fabrikeloff's, a block south of Overton. I live across the street from Phase Two for Trailside, okay? There's trichloroethylene in all three of those properties. Their corner, when the machinery came over the other day, I thought, oh, great, they got a vacuum machine, they got a bulldozer, they got a shovel, they can take care of this. Then I talked to Lisa, and we were walking the dogs, and she said, oh, they're just going to try to encapsulate it and come back in the spring and see if it works. So that's three times, three times in 20 years, and they still haven't gotten it. And we went over in Overton before, we looked at it, and trichloroethylene is in the northeast corner, just north of A&amp;D Party Store, okay? There's TCE in Phase Two of Trailside. And there's as much contamination in Overton as there is in Trailside or vice versa, okay? And they, I think, see, the problem is here is when Habitat applied, they went through MISTHA. So MISTHA went to Eagle, and Eagle reviewed the environmental, and it was a no-go from Eagle. Trailside Phase Two, Eagle did not review that. Eagle has more contamination than, or as much contamination as Overton does. It has TCE in it. And I went to a meeting with Public Works and our zoning administrator, and I knew an assistant city manager, just look at the drawings of what they're doing on the drainage. And the due care plan says they have engineering controls to take care of what they're doing over there. There is no, there are no notes, construction specs, or anything on the site plans, which were reviewed two years ago. There's nothing on the drainage drawings. Now, when they first started scrubbing the area, they did put the soil into two piles, and they covered it because you know the problems we had previously with them not covering piles. Well, they went and made some more, and then all of a sudden, I'm coming home from work on Friday, and I see them are putting a lot of this soil back on, okay? There is contamination from four inches to four feet with the soil samples, and they're digging eight to 10 feet. So all they did is remix up the contamination. In Trailside Phase One, they took out 17,000 cubic yards of topsoil, okay? They put in a barrier over it, and then they put a clean soil above it, like they're supposed to do. Then they started digging the basements, and they decided, wait a minute, there's still arsenic and selenium in there, so we better take all that soil out of there and send it to the Zeeland landfill. And that's what they did. Every owner paid $30,000 to have that soil transferred to Zeeland Environmental Landfill. On Trailside Two, there is, there's been no soil removed from there at all, okay? And it's just as contaminated as it showed in the 2019 Dixon Report, okay, of all the assessments that they made. Because I've lived there for five years, my house for four, and my son's house are on the corner, and they haven't taken one shovel of soil out of there except when they did samples on the PVC piping. And that's it. So what happened is, it got glossed over, and they've been working on that for three or four weeks already. And, you know, in our drought condition, there's all kinds of dust going up. People walk their dogs along the trail. Lisa walks her dogs up and down the trail, and on Indiana and Elkenberg, and it's crazy. And they haven't really done anything about it, okay?
You have one minute.
Thank you. And so, you know, it's the same thing we had before. Something has to be done. There's no details. Engineering controls, it says, engineering controls. The only engine control that's going to be done is after they finally get to the final grading, they put a cap on there, okay? But engineering control, there's no engine controls when they're doing it. There is none. They have, one of the engineering controls is growth on there, grass, weeds, whatever, to keep the volatiles and the containment down, okay? That was there, but as of four weeks ago, it's gone. So two-thirds of that property has been turned over again, and that part of the mitigation is gone. So we need, we need to have some details of what they're going to do and when they're going to do it. And right now, we don't have it. Thank you.
I am also talking about Overton. I have read the RFP and also was rather stunned that the work that has been done to analyze the soil and identify the contaminating issues there, that is not more of a presence in the RFP. I know Jim Hedinger presented or prepared it, and we have worked, we have met with Jim Hedinger, a couple of us from the people, from the group that, the community group that was working on coming up with something for Overton. We met with the city, and I think, I'm saying it pretty accurately, that Jim Hedinger was, we have to make the RFP favorable to attract the most attention from the developers, but as has been stated, we also have to be honest. And just having a little disclaimer saying that there is contamination, I, we have so much information that would be, behoove a developer to at least be aware. So I had stated that the environmental information already obtained should be included and referenced to in order to attract those developers interested and experienced in developing this type of property. And give all due respect for the interest and time of other developers who may respond that may not have this expertise in developing this type of property. We know these types, as Bishop Joe Wilkins said, we know there are properties that have been developed that are highly contaminated, and each one is unique. And I think that we have, it has to be very clear to a developer that this, this is what they're bidding on. There was something else I wanted to say about. I am very, very interested, very excited to have this area developed, but I think we do have to be very mindful. I know what I wanted to say. Bishop Joe Wilkins referred to the community event where Eagle was there. There are, it is, it is, this can be developed safely, and it can be developed effectively, but again, I think any developer needs to have as much information in, in the, when they are applying to do this development. I was going to go on to some other things that were, I do appreciate that it was indicated that they were mixed income. I did also see that market rate was in there as well, but I would like to believe that this is going to be a mixed income property that will include market rate as well. When, when we did meet with the city, and Griffin Graham reminded us several times, this is, this development is not going to be everything that we want for our housing It is going to be, hopefully, the workforce aspect will be, begin to be fulfilled with this. In addition to Trailside Two, providing, they've got, definitely got their issues there, too. I am not experienced-
You have one minute.
Thank you. I am not experienced with the whole situation, but the people that have been speaking are very knowledgeable. I, I'm not sure what's been done there and what's been taken care of, but it is concerning. If Trailside Two, if the developer does stick to what they said, to that the housing there will be 290,000 to 320,000, 320K, those units will each be that, that will begin to address our workforce housing as well. Thank you.
My name is Jesusa Alaman. I'm a resident, born and raised in South Haven, Michigan. And I just wanted to come up here and just ask you to consider my broker, Ryan and Mandy's donation to South Haven. And I was prompted to come up here and speak because I was there the day that Emily and Cory died on the South Beach. And I just want to say, you know, I showed up on the scene, and I had to park because the ambulance was there. So I parked, and I remember seeing women praying on the beach, and I joined them, and I was just trying to figure out what exactly was going on that day. And then I seen the first responders hustling and bustling to try to save their lives. I have two children at home, and ever since I seen that happen in front of me, I've been super careful, you know, obviously, being downtown, but, I'm sorry, it takes me a while to get my point across here. My foundation is also hospitality, so like, I come across tourists all the time, and, you know, I hear kids and young people say, hey, you know, let's jump off the pier, or let's swim to the buoy. And whenever I hear these things, I always tell them, hey, be careful, you know, don't be so comfortable in our town. I know it's so free-spirited here, and it feels so safe, but it's dangerous. But that day, I do just want to say, you know, I seen them bring their bodies to the ambulance, and I seen that. And I seen their mother, you know, before they did that, run out there to the scene in just astonishment, and what, what was unbelievably happening before her eyes, such a tragic, tragic event. And I'll never forget it. And this is my first meeting that I've attended, and I apologize that I haven't come sooner to say this, but if this robot could save one life, it's absolutely worth it. Please consider this donation. And I'll just leave it at that today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Barb Fish, 250 Kalamazoo Street, and I am a full-time resident in South Haven. And I also am coming forward to say I support this life device, I call it a device, it's more like a tool, a robot that can save lives. The purpose of Emily is to provide flotation to a person in distress, also to reduce panic so a person caught up in a rip tide has something to hold on to. My daughter's friend, David Nie, from Matteawan, near Kalamazoo, was caught in a rip tide on North Beach on July 4th, 2006, and he was 16 years old. And my daughter was very close friends with him. We happened to be here on July 4th. We were not living here, but we were on the beach and saw him that day with another friend that he came to swim with. The friend he was with was a strong swimmer and was able to reach, well, they were on North Beach, I don't know if I said that, but they went in, and I noticed that the water had changed really fast that day, and it was becoming very cloudy around 3:00 in the afternoon. And the friend he was with was able to reach the rocks near the pier. And my daughter had taken a walk with him. They had been swimming all day, and David was very new to South Haven, enjoying, was just enjoying it. He was a soccer player, and he loved running, and just, but I don't know if he was tired, but I do know it was all new to him. And this other kid that he was with, whose name was Paul, he grabbed David's hand, and it slipped. And David was in a state of panic, and this lifesaving tool that they're using with Emily, I wish we had it at the time, or some kind of lifesaving device. Since David's death, his drowning provoked discussion to the city on ways to, on beach safety, and they talked about placing life rings on the piers. This was 2006. Also, that same year, signage was added on how to escape a rip current. At that time, Mayor Smith said the city was promoting a 15-minute DVD about rip currents and produced by Grand Haven officials. He was hoping the area district schools would include that in their K-12 curriculum and pass on to other school districts. The city's most aggressive support with water safety at that time was the Area Emergency Service Authority, who received a free Kawasaki utility vehicle, and the motor vehicle was expected to decrease the department's response time to shoreline emergencies. Since that time, there have been other drownings, and as we just heard, I know 2022, I think, was the last one. But what I feel so bad when you know someone-
You have one minute.
It's just, as they said about David, devastatingly, David, the young man who loved life so much, died on July 4th, 2006, while swimming in Lake Michigan at South Haven. This you hear, we have heard since, only with different names. And again, I support Emily as something that would really help our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather Wells Johnson, 931 South Haven Place. It's been a minute since I've been in council, so I just wanted to come tonight and share my support for Ryan and Mandy, and the gift that they are donating the Emily to the city of South Haven. I remember a year ago, I invited counties from Muskegon all the way down to New Buffalo to come and watch the Emily in action out on our beaches, and it was well-received. And now we've got two in St. Joe, we've got them in New Buffalo, and now we can, we have the opportunity to have them here in South Haven. So I'm really grateful that you guys are taking the time to really consider it and that you're going to put into place the proper procedures to be able to utilize it in the proper ways. And if you need any help on that, I'm all for it. So good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Carla Rupert, from 508 Phoenix Street. I am just here to publicly thank Big Blue Rentals and Century 21 for donating a wonderful thing to this community. I came with an open mind, thinking, well, maybe there might be some negatives that I haven't heard, and I'm really happy to not hear any negatives. So I'm excited to see this potentially happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Young, 533 Quaker Street. I just want to say I support Emily. I think it'd be a great addition to our beach safety program, and thank you, Ryan and Mandy.
Thank you, Mark.
Hi, Mary Strain, 533 Quaker. I also want to thank them for this Emily. I think it could save a life, and it's very important. It was a very generous gift. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Victoria Henry, 814 Center Street. In watching the video about the Emily, I'm not sure, quite sure what's going to happen tonight when it's presented, whether or not that there will be any discussion, so I figured I better get up and do it now, in case there isn't. The Emily, when I saw it working in the videos, it's picking up a person that's above water, helping people above water. So we all have to remember, and as the city goes forward with this and lifeguards, that this is, I'm assuming, a benefit for those that are above water. Below water, I don't think it has that ability to, to help anyone, which is, it's not a problem, but I'm just saying that I think we need to work with the, you know, with that apparatus. I don't know if it's going to come out when it's presented, whether or not, okay, it's wonderful. Trust me. I mean, it's wonderful. It's a great thing that they've done, but- But who's in control? Who's going to monitor it? I really would like to know, it has to go by a drone or like work with, you know, a mechanism. Who's going to do that? Who's going to be the proper person, legal, doesn't matter, to be able to run that gadget? If you call Shay's into it, you might as well just use the guys and women that are on the department because of the water rescue. Again, I'm not trying to say this is a negative. I think this is a good step. I haven't been to the meetings because I trust, that's why you guys are supposed to be in office, because you guys are supposed to represent us. And I shouldn't have to be holding hands, I shouldn't have to come to the meetings, I shouldn't have to be doing this. That's your job. But sounds like there's not enough communication, or I should say clear communication between the council and the town about the issue of the lifeguards. I'm sure there are a lot of rules out there and things like that, that you guys may know that they don't know. Why can't, why can't we just be honest with each other and say, look, the reason why we haven't brought this particular subject up is because we are checking on this particular mandate or this particular rule or checking with our lawyer about ta-da-ta-da. If you can't give them accurate information, it's just going to keep going around in a circle. So just communicate, just be honest, be forward in the sense of what the information is. Don't, don't be saying, oh, our lawyers are checking into it. Checking into what? You know, it's, there are lawyers too, I'm assuming, since, you know, they work in for the city. So please openly consider this mechanism. I think it's great. But again, I would like to hear how it's all going to work afterwards. And please, please be open to your constituents and listen. And communicate back to them what exactly is holding things up.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through D?
I move to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
I had provided comments on Friday with regard to amending the minutes, and I've provided hard copies for everybody before the meeting today. So I don't know if you want to move, I would request that that be removed and be handled separately.
You wanted to move, is it?
A.
Item A, okay. We will move that to, let's move it to 15A. Okay, is there, is there a motion to approve?
We did.
There you go.
Yep. Please see the vote. Roll call.
So we're going to have a roll call vote on approving consent agenda items B, C, and D.
Of course.
Arnold.
Yes.
Hosley.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reeser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
And Brown.
Yes, thank you. Next, a new business. The city council will be asked to consider the approval of the following special event applications. A, special event 2024-38, the Blueberry Craft Fair, to be held in Stanley Johnson Park starting Friday, August 8 through Sunday, August 10, 2025. B, special event 2024-39, the 49th Annual All Crafts Fair, to be held in Stanley Johnson Park, starting Friday, August 29 through Sunday, August 31, 2025. And C, special event 2024-40, Break the Ice 5K Race, to be held on Sunday, February 2, 2025, from 8:00 AM to noon on Kalamazoo Street, Lovejoy Avenue, Monroe Boulevard, and Water Street.
I, I move to approve special events 2024-38, 2024-39, and 2024-40, as read by the mayor.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? The special events have been approved.
Mayor. Kate, could you tell us, is there any new additions to the, has anyone here from any of these items that would like to?
The chambers here, if you have any questions, but these are returning events that are, Olivia was just getting out the door. But no, these are returning events, nothing, nothing's new. And as I said, they're, these are, these are well-known events in the, in the area.
Okay.
Thank you. You may go now. Number 10, the city council will be asked to confirm the appointment of council member Joe Reeser to the South Haven Area Recreation Authority Board for a five-year term beginning January 1, 2025.
Kate. Thank you, Mayor. The CHARA board recently was amended, it's Articles of Incorporation. So now there are three at-large members. The city has an appointee, the township hall, I'm sorry, the South Haven Township has an appointee, and then the school has an appointee. The city's employee appointee was Brian DeSette, his term ends the end of the year. So the CHARA board has worked with Mayor Brown and suggested that a council member, Mr. Reeser, be appointed to the city's appointee. Now, the CHARA terms are five years, according to the Articles of Incorporation amended in 2021. If, if the council would like to have another council member at the terminus of Mr. Reeser's term, or if he'd like, he'd like to step down, council can reappoint a new member as the city appointee.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to confirm the appointment of council member Joe Reeser to the South Haven Area Recreation Authority Board for a five-year term beginning on January 1, 2025.
Second.
Discussion. Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Number 11, the city council will be presented with the final draft of the Overton RFP. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. So we already had quite some discussion on draft language for the RFP. We did clean up some of the language, as well as add some graphics to it. We also did have the city's attorney, as well as the, our consultants with Fishback, look over our RFP. I did hear some of the concerns tonight about maybe the, the environmental is not as, as, I guess, to the standards that they're looking for. I'm happy to add the link to our page because we have exhaustive information on the Overton site. All the environmental reports that we have are all listed there, and I'm happy to add that to the RFP. But we are trying to redevelop this site. We do know that housing is a critical need for this community. It is one of council's priorities that have been set for the, for the city staff to aim for. And we believe that this RFP, which mirrors what the council is asking the city staff to provide, is encapsulated in this RFP. This does have a very aggressive development timeline, and of course, as we get through the process, and if there's more time that is needed, we can, we can adjust for that. But I think this also demonstrates the council's request to move quickly on this, understanding that the, that the community is asking us to address some housing needs. And this is just but one option the city has.
Thank you. Is there, is there a motion to approve the final draft of the Overton RFP?
I make a motion to approve the final draft of the Overton RFP.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I would, and I'm trying to find the page that has the environmental section on it. I would move to strike previous before environmental and contamination. It's on page 78. And to add the link to the Overton redevelopment site and specifically to the Overton Site Assessment Final Report of October 2023. There's a lot of information on the Overton site page and drawing attention to the most recent report that I do believe addresses a lot of concerns, and it just gives a quick focal point for people to go to, developers to go to, to appreciate what is proposed.
Was there a second?
Oh, and there's also a typographical error.
Okay, there's no sec?
I, I will second it. I was thinking something similar, but maybe saying previously identified instead of striking it altogether, but just kind of making that clear. But I do support having a link to those two, Overton informational pages.
Any other discussion?
I have a question. Kate, based on the, on this proposal, this new proposal, is this going to slow down the RFP? Would we then have to, you'll have to take it, add this link, then you have to bring it back to us to reapprove?
I hope not. I think we can just add that link. And if the council approves the motion to strike the word previous from that particular section, we're just going to do that. Because I think if we delay that much more and wait for the November 4th meeting, we're already behind the ball. So I think the idea is to get this approved and published as soon as possible.
Any other comments? Joe.
Yeah, just one comment. I would think if a developer is looking at this page 78, that they would look at the environmental issues, and it's kind of a, a red flag that would go up, and they would go to either to that site or talk to you, Kate. But they're not going to let this get by them without looking at it in great detail. This is their money, they're sticking their neck out to do it. Once they start spending a lot of money for this development, they're going to know ahead of time what they're getting into. So I appreciate all the residents' concerns that the builder is not going to be caught unguarded on this, but they are going to do due diligence. If they don't, they shouldn't be our builder. So I don't think we have to worry about it. I am concerned about the contamination, but I'm also thinking that the builder and all the work that we have and all the information, that they're going to be able to get through this with the guidance of Eagle and the other agencies to move this project forward. The only other thing I wanted to say, I am thrilled to have a timeline. I have talked to other council people, and we've been frustrated at times over things not having timelines. Here we have a timeline. Is it aggressive? Yeah, fine. We have taken years, and some of us have been with through Habitat, and it has been frustrating not to move it forward. So I'm glad to have a timeline.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
One other, on page 79, it says RFQ, but this is an RFP, so you want to change the Q to a P for consistency.
I see.
And, and I would support doing, removing the previous, you may actually get a line by removing the two previous, and then I think, so it's all self-contained, it minimizes having to contact the city, having the link right in the document.
Do you understand, can you read the motion back to us?
Of course. I don't have the exact report, but I do have that we would like to strike the word previous from the paragraph and then add the link to the most recent environmental report.
And so it would be striking previous before environmental and contamination and adding the general link to the Overton redevelopment site and specifically to the Overton Site Assessment Final Report from October 2023.
I think, I'm not going to, if I may, if you're asking to put two links in there, one to the Overton assessment, it's going to be all on the page. So if we give just the website, then they get all the reports instead of just one report.
There's a motion, a second. Let's do a roll call.
Hosley.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reeser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
And Brown.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now we have to vote on the?
The proposal.
That was Mary's.
Oh, okay, now we're voting on your proposal?
No, we just did.
The whole thing? Okay, we're voting on the whole kit and caboodle now?
Ready? Okay, Onuki.
Yes.
Reeser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Hosley.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, next, the city council will be asked to review a request for proposals seeking a consultant to assist with the development of a lifeguard program.
Would you like a motion or would you like to hear from Kate?
Sure. Okay. Which? Sorry. Very good, Mayor. We have, as, our third priority is to look at life, beach safety operations and seek to improvement, as well as explore the creation of a lifeguard program. Previously, we've had the city council receive a report on what we think a lifeguard program could look like. We also have had a member of the public put together what they think a lifeguard program could look like. But from what I understand, the council's looking for a little bit more expertise, and so that's what we have done, is we've put together this RFQ, RFP slash, I guess we put it on both of them, but we're looking for some details from a person or a firm that has put together a lifeguard program in another place. And I know that Kim has done a lot of legwork on this, she's talked to a couple of other vendors that have done this. And again, I want to stress that these are people who have implemented, have developed and implemented and maintained and/or a lifeguard program. And so that's what we're looking at here. Here, the City of South Haven did have lifeguards more than 20 years ago, and we would be starting a brand-new department. So this RFP, which was reviewed by the city's, the city attorney, seeks to provide a consultant that would develop recommendations and options on staffing levels, training, equipment and supplies for lifeguard services to provide, to be provided to the city. We did provide two options. One option is to provide lifeguard services at all seven of our beaches, or two, option two, to provide lifeguard services at just north and south beaches. We are asking the consultant to give us numbers for both of those. And the idea is to give council all the options that is available to help develop what a program would look like. And I know Kim's up here to answer any questions, but we did this draft RFP. In my mind, this is very much a professional services, and we may not, I don't think we needed to go out to an RFP, but I did know this is something that's very close to the city council's priority list. Well, it is their priority, but there's some on council that are very concerned about this. And so I thought it would be better to come here and get some impressions or any, any input on that, rather than going through a process of selecting a consultant and then going through, getting, getting input, and then it didn't meet the mark of what council was looking for. So that's why this RFP is before you, if there's anything you'd like to add, or if things are not covered in the RFP. Kim, did you have anything to add on the RFP? I do also want to make note that I think I've heard before that people are very concerned that the RFP, or the consultants that we had reached out to were not open water. And Kim, can you talk a little bit about that?
The folks that we did speak with, they all said that they were open water. There was another one we spoke to in October as well, and they confirmed that they were open water. So I think Kate covered pretty much everything very well. I've been assisting Kate on this, just because she is so busy with many projects, so just trying to add a little extra support to her.
Okay, should we do a motion?
Should we do what?
Let's do a motion and then discuss.
I had provided an amended potential RFP. So, I mean, I, I would move to support an RFP as amended, and I can go through those amendments. I had provided by email earlier today and provided everybody a hard copy. So under point one for the RFP after access points, I would insert an advising on the necessity of any lifeguard program at the five public beaches slash access points in those identified as numbers three to seven. Under the heading on page 83 of About the City of South Haven's Beaches, amend the fourth paragraph from the heading by inserting after the first sentence, "Most, if not all, of the beachfront properties of South Beach have hard armoring." And then the last amendment was on page 84, under the selection criteria, insert after the second sentence, "The city manager will provide all timely submitted proposals to the city council by close of business on November 27, 2024. The city council shall authorize the selection of the consultant."
Could you comment on that, especially the last one?
Yes, I do know that a number of city staff, including myself, will be out of the office on Wednesday, the 24th. It does happen to be the day before Thanksgiving. I happen to be putting out a dinner for 15 people. I will not be here. I will be happy to get those proposals scanned and out to council Monday, December 2nd. That's the first day after the holiday. I am concerned about the language about the city council shall authorize the selection of the consultant, quite simply. The consultant is, has to work with city staff. This is something that is a professional service in my mind. They work very intimately with city staff. The only consultants that the city council do select are the city attorney. And we did go through that process. It is in the charter that is a consultant that provides a certain service to the city council and they are in part very directly related in selecting that. We do not have city council selecting our consultants for fishback, our water systems, our engineering, our financial services consultant, or our economic development services consultant. I am happy that, you know, I understand that, again, there's a lot of interest in this. I'm happy to review those proposals with city staff. Again, we would be bringing those consultants or an agreement and a selected consultant to the city council. And we can rank them. If there's somebody that council would prefer, we could have that input. But I do believe that the selection of a consultant should remain with staff as that is the province of staff. To develop procedure.
Mary, your comment about the armory, armaments?
Yes.
What's the address where those appear?
So it's almost all of the homes along Monroe Boulevard, Monroe Boulevard, south of South Beach. And the purpose or the basis of that request is to, on May 9, the Planning Commission received a shoreline protection study by Edgewater. And as part of that presentation by Greg Wykamp, on May 29, there was discussion about the hard armor revetments and the fact that it creates issues with sand and it can create larger waves and that it also affects riptide currents. And so if we are asking someone to look at beach safety and because we have, I have this information from being on Planning Commission about the contributions to currents, waves that can cause rip currents from that presentation, I thought that that, for one, of skill in beach safety that would be relevant for them to know, it would not be readily available.
I walked down Monroe Boulevard today and the beaches are open. And I did not see any of the riffraff or armaments down to Lake Court. And it's probably beyond Lake Court, but that was the point where I stopped.
Well, had you reached out to me, I could have sent you photos from the Edgewater Report, which is available online that shows many armor structures along that, essentially the whole shoreline.
I didn't see those.
They have photographs from the lake. They have much better view than from the sidewalk. And you can also listen to the video from May 9. It starts at about 48 minutes, although it's a later agenda item. They moved it up to the front because Greg had to leave early.
So what are the addresses?
As I said, it is all of the areas down to, along the lake. Had you asked me this question beforehand, I could have gotten you the addresses. But with this agenda item being added after 5:00 PM on Friday, and I provided this information at 11:00 AM, I could have provided that.
And I've been on these beaches and it, so I know that I could tell that they're open and free.
Well, actually, depending on how high the water is because of the revetments, you can no longer walk the full length in the public access that is supposed to be available. Much of it ends at the Blue House that is immediately south of South Beach.
I'll send you my pictures tomorrow.
That's fine. But what I am saying is an expert in beach safety would benefit from having the information about the hard armoring south of South Beach if the expert is proposing a lifeguard program on South Beach because the waves are affected by the hard armoring. And I can send you the link to that report and I can cite you pages that show the pictures of the hard armoring.
Jeff, did you have a comment?
I did. Just a couple of, on these suggested amendments. I think an expert in beach safety will recognize that armoring will affect the South Beach, much like Joe was saying, that a builder is going to know about toxins and do their homework. So I'm not really worried about that. Number four, I don't like the city, I feel like that's an overreach of city council trying to authorize consultants that only the staff will work with. And as Kate said, she could give us a shortlist, so I don't feel that's necessary. And further, I don't like micromanaging the staff right before a holiday. And I also have legal concerns about one and three because when we had heard from insurance and legal before, I would rather have the consultant make those decisions than have legal. So I would not be in support of any of these changes.
I believe you misunderstood the first change. So the first change is not saying not do the beaches, but giving the consultant the opportunity to opine on the consultant's expertise of whether those beaches require lifeguard or if there's other ways to protect them.
And based on legal that we've heard, it should be not that, not handled this way.
I too have concerns because if there's a beach, like the Oak Street Beach, that is not guarded and then there could be a drowning there. So that's my concern about picking certain beaches to have lifeguards and leaving others unprotected.
Can I comment on that? I know we all got an email from Bob Pratt today that kind of addressed that. And I did appreciate that information. I know it's kind of complex and there's not a really good answer that'll be 100% for sure. But I know he said, in the text that he sent, a book stated that if it is not a beach that is built up with restrooms and other attractions and such, that is more likely to not need a lifeguard. So depending on how this proposal goes with what we get from it, I don't, I guess I'm saying it's possible that we don't need lifeguards at all, seven beaches. And I am definitely open to that. Is this kind of why we have the language to include all seven beaches? And there is just kind of from a protective standpoint?
Well, there's two options. One option is to look at both North and South Beaches, which are our largest beaches, our most heavily attended beaches, and there are also the beaches that are above both piers. The second, or, and maybe I'm mixing up the order, but the other option is to look at all of the beaches, which correlates to some of the concerns that have been raised that if you're not providing services at all your beaches, you could be opening yourself up to a concern that you didn't provide something that you provided somewhere else.
That's what I was referring to.
Mayor, for what it's worth, I started looking into this and I know there are big beaches in this country.
Councilman Reese?
Take Florida.
You might-
I'm sorry. I'll give you some examples. Sarasota, Florida is supposed to have one of the most pristine beaches. And they have lifeguards, but they have other sections. They can walk right down the beach and there's a big sign that says, "From this point forward, no lifeguards." So they have the main part of the beach where most people go have lifeguards, several of them. But then you walk further and there's still nice beaches. Some people still sit up there. But there are no lifeguards and they have a sign that says, "No lifeguards." And I talked to, for whatever it's worth, he called himself, he had a badge saying a sheriff. And he was talking to the lifeguard there. So I talked to the two of them. And I asked if there's any liability when you have certain parts of the beach protected with lifeguards and others not. And he said, "No." And I said, "Are you sure?" And remember, he's not a lawyer. He's not, I'm not holding this to be absolute accurate. But he said they can have beaches that are protected with lifeguards and sections that are not. And there's never been a problem with that. So it must be able to be done because this is a much bigger city with a whole lot more people and they do it on a regular basis. So I do think we could pick, example, North and South Beach, protect them and leave the rest to follow the procedure we have already that seems to be acceptable to the city with our flags and everything else to protect people. So let that continue, but pick lifeguards where we have most of the people swimming and protect them, protect those tourists and those residents with lifeguards. I think we can do both.
George?
So a couple of things. One is I also read Bob Pratt's email. And he talked about beaches that have parking and bathrooms. That's Packard Park. And our current beach safety plan does include buoys at Packard Park, which kind of sets that up as being in line with North and South Beach. So I agree with the aspect of having two options. One, looking at all the beaches and looking at just North and South Beach. I also am not, I kind of agree with Jeff. I don't think we should be micromanaging city staff on this type of proposal by having the city council approve this. I looked at the changes that Mary proposed. I don't think that any of them really are necessary. And since this RFP has been through legal, I am inclined not to change it. So that's my-
Okay.
Just one more thing. So we've asked city staff to put together a lifeguard program. They are telling us this is something they want. I want to have the best lifeguard program that we can. So I'm inclined to go with what city staff wants. They're telling us that they need to do that lifeguard program as best as possible.
Okay. Any other-
Annie, Mayor, the one real issue that stands out that Mary brought up was the selection of the ultimate consultant that we use. Now, from sitting up here, I've watched people come to this city council and voice real concerns about, right or wrong, about what our city staff is doing to move this forward, what we've done to move it forward and some of the decisions that have been made. With that in mind, I would like the city council to have some say in who we choose as a consultant. But the other side of it is, I do think Kate and staff are the ones managing this program. And therefore, long-term, if we pick a consultant, if we go with the program, then they should have some say in the ultimate choice. So I think there's a middle ground on here. Let city staff choose or come to us with five or six different choices. Let city council boil it down to a shortlist, two or three, and then let Kate and city staff pick the shortlist. But let us have some input how to get to that shortlist so we also have some input. Then residents can know it was the city council that represents them that is also having a part in who we choose. So it's kind of a middle ground on the selection.
Did you hear Kate's comment on that?
I did. I talked to Kate at length today, too.
Okay. Let's have a motion for the-
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Okay, sorry. When I'm looking through the checklist on page 84, I'm just wondering if we need anything as far as the timeline or expectation of implementation so that the people who are providing a potential plan know what our expectations are. And I guess my biggest concern is we would like this for the next summer, not 2026. So I wanted that to be clear. So I don't know if we need a timeline from them or if we get the information, we're comfortable implementing that within the timeframe.
I think it would be smart to put in a timeframe that they have to submit their report that we can share to council. But again, we're looking for, one, responses so that we would have to select a consultant to help develop a program for council to review. And then council determines whether or not that's, you know, the consultant, you know, let me back up here. Putting in a timeline on the RFP so the consultants know what we're aiming for, that we're aiming for determining if there is a program to be implemented for next year, I think is absolutely important. It does help setting up everyone's kind of like what we're aiming for and a deadline to work backwards from. Is there a timeframe that you, are you thinking that this would be a month of, of, once the consultant is selected, that they're, they've got a month to determine the report? What kind of a timeframe are you looking for? Kim, do you have anything to share on that?
So what you're asking is for us to ask during this RFP if they would build a timeline for us. Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay.
For implementation and before-
So we're not giving them a timeline. We're asking them to build us a timeline.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Okay.
So to address the issues raised about concerns and liability, that is exactly what the amendment is intended to do. It is asking an expert who sets up lifeguard programs to opine on whether the expert believes a lifeguard program is necessary at each of those beaches, three through seven, or whether there's other ways to provide safety programs at that other than lifeguards. Because I don't think it's lifeguards or nothing. I think that based on comments, we definitely want lifeguards at South Beach and North Beach. Councilman Sleeper provided a point that possibly Packard Park should fall within that. It's not clear that Dyckman, Woodman, Oak and Newcombe fall within that. I mean, Newcombe is a 20-foot easement. And if we have an expert familiar with setting up lifeguard programs saying, "You do not have to have a lifeguard program at this beach. You can provide safety through this type of signage." That would then give us the basis to say, "Okay, we do not need lifeguards at those beaches." And I don't believe that has been considered by legal because that hasn't been discussed. It's been lifeguards or no lifeguards.
Do you have any comments?
No, I don't have any comments.
Is there a motion to, let me see where I meant. Is there a motion to approve the request for proposals seeking a consultant to assist with development of a lifeguard program?
I move to approve request for proposals seeking a consultant to assist with the development of a lifeguard program as written by city staff.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
I move to-
Discussion.
Yeah, and I move to amend. We haven't really addressed that. So I, again, move to incorporate the item in point one that was previously read. And I move to incorporate the items on page 83 as previously read and on, under About City of South Haven's Beaches under, and also on page 83 about under Scope of Work. And for page 84, I would say, I would insert after the second sentence, "The city manager will provide all timely submitted proposals to the city council by close of business on Monday, December 2, 2024, and that city council shall be involved with the selection of the consultant.
Is there a second? The motion fails because there is no second.
Now. Wait a minute. I was still listening to see if we're going to take this piecemeal so it's not all or nothing.
No, that was her motion to pass this with those changes. Yep.
And I'll say yes. I, I support that. Sorry.
Are you seconding it?
I'm seconding it.
Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley? Yes. Onuki? Yes. Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
And that is three noes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, the.
Now we gotta vote on the whole thing. Now we have to vote on the whole thing.
Oh, okay. Now we're voting on the whole thing.
And it's the amended version.
Yep.
Yes.
For roll call on the amended version. So Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on. The city council will be asked to consider a gift donation of an Emily lifesaving robot. And Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have a potential gift donation that is being produ, uh, proposed to the city council. This is a donation of an Emily lifesaving robot. Ryan and Mandy Cervetus are here. They are the ones who are offering to gift this to the City of South Haven. This was something, this gift donation was reviewed by the city's Parks Commission on two separate occasions. On the first occasion, they had the opportunity to look at the robot and, and have a chance to review all the different components on it. And had more, had questions for city staff. City staff took the next month to investigate it further. Ultimately, the, the planning committee, or the, I'm sorry, the Parks Commission did forward their recommendation to the city council to, to consider the approval of the donation, but did want to share their, their concerns and their discussions that, that occurred at that meeting. I have a video here if it would be helpful to share what an Emily is in action. So I will go ahead and play this video and share this with the.
Emergency crews making dangerous rescues to pull struggling swimmers from Lake Michigan. This video is from South Haven in September of 2020. But there is a new tool that could potentially save lives. 13 on your side snake belt was in South Haven today to check it out.
Rescue crews from all over the lake shore came out to South Haven today for a demonstration of brand-new lifesaving technology, the emergency integrated lifesaving lanyard, or Emily. The drone is able to travel unmanned to drowning victims, able to get there faster and safer than a typical boat. It can carry a life jacket and helmet to a person and has ropes on the side for people to hold on to as an extra source of flotation until someone can get to them. Scott Gambi, Park Township's fire chief, attended the demonstration and was wowed by what he saw.
We've had drownings in our areas and we're trying to address that. And I think it's just another tool that's out there that you, you can do, a fast deployment. And yeah, it definitely has some possibility.
The Emily costs anywhere between 14 and $25,000 depending on the model. Gambi says he hopes to open discussions with the township about potentially bringing one to their beaches soon in South Haven. Snake belt, 13 on your side.
My patients trust me to give them the facts and the fact is Supreme Court.
Stop that there. So that is the, that's the video. And so if council would have any questions for me or for Mr. Cervetus, I'm happy to have him come up and explain why he's, he's looking to donate this to the city. This is but one Emily robot. I do understand that there may be a second group that would be considering a donation for the North Beach.
Does anyone have questions?
I have a question. I am just wondering where it will be stored and who would be able to access it.
Well, that's a very good question. I don't, I know that the Emily robot is set up for pretty much universal usage. And many, I think there's two beaches in the Northern UP that do set it up for use by anyone who accesses very remote beaches. But I, I also understand that in, down here where we have very populated beaches, professionals from the city or, or the government are the ones who are trained to use that. Here, we've kind of discussed internally that if this was donated to the city, we would start, we would locate this in, in a, in a maximum opportunity area. Either be adjacent to one of the piers, which happened to be one of our problem areas, and likely be trained on city staff. We have beach enforcement attendants who are on the beaches every day and they would be trained on how to use that as well as any of our first responders or anything like that. So we're trying to get it, we would think about having anybody who would be responding to the beaches be accessible and trained on that. That is something that we believe would be, be beneficial because it is a lifesaving tool, but it is also still something that should somebody use it. It may not be available for somebody who does need to use it. So we have to make sure that it's charged and that it's stored properly and that it's being monitored for, that it's in tip-top shape for it to be used.
Joe.
Yeah, first, I'd like to thank Ryan and his wife for, for providing that to the city at no cost. That is very generous, very kind, and it shows your concern about our community, the tourists and the residents. I've always wondered how someone could quickly go to that box, open it, you know, with, with getting the code and use it. Having said that, if they don't, we're no worse off. But if we, I'm sorry, but if we get a good Samaritan, someone quick, they could get it to work, we could save a life. Surely the people that are on our staff could be trained and they could save a life. So I see absolutely no downside and a whole lot of upside, whether it's a tourist or a resident or someone trained. Either way, we win if they can get it out there quick enough. So I absolutely support it at this point unless someone can give me a compelling reason not to take it.
Ryan, would you like to come forward and talk? First of all, thank you so much for your generosity.
Thank you for your time this evening. Actually, I was on the beach with, I know Joe, Annie and a few others were there and Mary when they demonstrated it. And I thought it was a remarkable tool. And it shows you how far advancements in technology have gone. And talking to Bob Pratt and talking to Heather Johnson and seeing what can we do? We don't have a life program right now. There's no lifeguards. So we said, what can we do to bridge the gap in between? Because like you said, Joe, if you can save one life and you get there and get it, it's better than not having anything at all. And it's not just for, we have lifeguards. If we get a lifeguard program, which is what we want, it's a tool for them. It's sitting next to them on the beach. But when they're off shift, because 24/7, people are walking at beach or jumping in the water. You want to be able to have something that can save them at eight o'clock, nine o'clock at night because it does happen. People have fun, they jump in the water at 11 o'clock at night after they may have been barred. And somebody walks by and sees somebody struggling, they can go to that box, they can call 911, they give them the code, they open it up, they throw it in the water and they're out there saving somebody. It's pretty, it's very simple to use. It's just a remote control. Now granted, the reason we have to keep it locked up is because unfortunately we do deal with the public and somebody would get in there and use it and you don't want that. You want it to be ready and accessible for those that need it. But that was our whole thing was how can we get back to the community? Especially being in real estate and having a, a short-term rental company, we bring people here. So we're bringing people here. We felt that we had a responsibility to also try and keep them safer. And so we made the decision to, let's buy it, let's donate it and hopefully save a couple of lives. The nice thing too is we've got a great response where we have a volunteer who's going to make the storage unit for it. So it's very simple. Nice thing is, like Kate said, working with Hydronics, who is the owner, and professionals who will decide with the city staff, where the best location is going to be on the beach for a quick rapid response time. And I leave that up to you guys. We just wanted to be able to donate it and hopefully save some lives. Anything for you?
No, I just feel like when you ask who's going to maintain it, when we have the life jackets on the beach, who checks the life jackets? Who makes sure that the clasps are so good that there's no rips, there's no tears, anything like that? Same thing with the device. They, all they have to do is go and take a look at it, make sure the battery's ready to go and close it back up. We just thought it was an easy way to save a life if we had to have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions?
I have a question. I have a question. Ryan, first I want to say thank you for that, to you and your wife. But I do have a question. Is there a cost for maintaining this robot?
So the maintenance from talking to Hydronics and people with it, you have to check the battery. The battery is supposed to be good for about seven years. It's a lithium. If it's not being used on a regular basis, which we hope it doesn't get used, it's about a seven weeks in between charging. But we look at it this way. If you're going to come out and check on it, you open it up, look, hit the button, yep, charge is still good, lock it back up, keep going, check on the life refs, or excuse me, not life refs, but the flags and everything else. Wintertime, it's up to you guys whether you keep it on the beach or put it in warm storage during the off hours, or off season.
I would also add, we checked with the battery and how much the batteries are. We estimate that if we do have to replace the batteries, it's about $400. In talking with other, other municipalities that have had it, many have had theirs for over six, seven years and have never had to replace the batteries because they're not used very much, which is a good thing. So we're seeing nominal maintenance costs here.
One thing I will add is we just got a video that Luddington ordered theirs after ours and they just had their first rescue with one on the beach. So it's good to hear.
Randy?
Who used it when they were doing the rescue in Luddington?
That one, I'd have to look.
Okay, I was just wondering.
And that's what's interesting is some of these lakes have remote beaches where no one, others have it where just staff uses it. And others have it where it's staffed during the daytime and at night it would be available and the public needed to use it.
Okay. And then just to clarify, because I know you said if a passerby saw someone in distress and called 911, they would have access to use it. Is that right?
That's how some have done it, is they have like a, a pad that you're given a code.
Would we do that here in addition to having trained staff?
I'm not sure, but it's an option that we can develop a procedure. It just depends on whether or not council is going to accept the gift and then we go down that path.
Okay. And then I just also wanted to say, I know that the gift policy can be kind of cumbersome sometimes. And when we're talking about what are the maintenance costs, where is it going to be stored and all those logistics, it's not meant to deter any gifts. It's just kind of checking the boxes. So I don't want you to see that as us trying to be negative and we don't want this. I think it's amazing and I'm thankful for it and I know a lot of people in the community are. So, thank you, guys.
And that's our thing too. So when we first started this, we thought it'd be quicker, we were trying to get it on the beaches this summer. So you'll see a Sheiz logo on it, but we can have that covered up with a City of South Haven logo now because it would be a gift to the city.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the gift donation of an Emily lifesaving robot?
I move to approve the donation of an Emily lifesaving robot.
Second.
All the favors say yes?
Yes.
Oppose? The motion passes. Thank you. Thank you so much. Moving on, the city council will be asked to receive an update on the fiscal year 2024-25 priorities.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I know that as part of, just making sure we're staying on track, we have three main priorities. I did put in a little chart that kind of shows the priorities that we see from a staffing perspect, perspective as to how we're, we're accomplishing our items. Going with our first one, our short-term rental ordinance amendments review, we've, we are making progress, but we have not made certain progress as we are waiting on certain zoning by the planning commission. So I do have it in red where the review recommendations from the planning commission. I do have good news that the planning commission has set the zoning ordinance for the STR for their, for a public hearing to occur in November. Their first meeting, well, their only meeting in November. So once we have that kind of finalized, if that's, if it's only one meeting, anything for that public hearing would be coming up to city council and we can turn that to yellow. So we, we're, we're kind of making progress there. So as you remember, there's a zoning ordinance portion, which is at the planning commission, which is set for public hearing for their first meeting in November. I'm sorry, for, for the planning commission meeting in November, which is the first Thursday of, of November. And then we're working on our regulatory ordinance here. As we had our meeting last week, we had, last week, last two weeks ago, there was a number of comments that had been recorded because I know we had a robust discussion. That's been shared with the city attorney and we're sharing that, you know, sharing that so we can keep that going. So that's kind of the staff's perspective where it kind of red and yellow. Red because we haven't achieved certain milestones yet simply because of the process we have to take with zoning ordinances. But the rest are making progress. I hesitate to put anything too much in green because it means that everything should be done or at least, and, and I know we've got some ways to go on the short-term rental ordinance. Moving on to developing housing, including Overton, I did put the redevelopment of the Overton site in green because as, I was hopeful tonight that we would be passing an RFP for that site, knowing that, that is very interesting to council. We do have some zoning ordinance updates. So good news is that the planning commission did just recently have their public, their public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendment. That will be coming to city council at their November 18th meeting so we can start our review of the zoning ordinance amendment, or recodification. And there are, excuse me, always items to be done. I know that this zoning ordinance is not going to cover everything. There will be more items that we'll have to do from a zoning perspective. But again, we're trying to move that ball forward, move the needle forward. The master plan update is underway. They had their kickoff meeting. We just had a community open house last, I want to say last Thursday, on the 10th. And we're also still trying to plan for housing at all price points. We're still looking at different options. I do know that there's some, there's some housing grants that are coming across either to help people revitalize their home or to assist with renovating their homes for energy usage. I did share that the area action, Southwest, Southwest Area Action Agency has some grant dollars for folks who think they need some assistance with weatherizing. Again, we're just trying to keep people in their houses and, and improve that. So those things are kind of in flux, but that's why that's in yellow. And then lastly, we've got our beach safety improvements. We've got ongoing updates to the Marty Jordan Beach Safety Plan. And of course, we had the, we are exploring that, the, the RFP that council just approved. So we're working on those items a little bit at a time. And I did want to make this like a quarterly update, simpler, similar to how we provide our, our financial update to the city council. So I'm hoping to pair these two together so you're getting timely updates on a quarterly manner about our priorities. Are there any questions I can answer?
I just want to thank you because I think it's a good idea to have updates so the public can see it and we can see our progress. Because it is a concern for a lot of us that we're not moving fast enough. So at least we can see here graphically where we're at.
Yeah, I know that we can't, I don't always share everything that's going on behind the scenes, but we are making, there's just a lot of work that's being done, but you don't always get to see it. I know we heard tonight that, you know, you know, is the city council checking the liability? The city council is always looking into what is going on, what are the concerns? City council has an awesome but fearsome job to try and balance all the different concerns that come before it and, and to take their, their O's of office very seriously. So I do appreciate the work the council has done. We have had a number of closed and, and sessions this year, setting priorities, getting trainings, as well as talking about a number of weighty issues. And council has really put a lot of time into getting those, those items done.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mary?
Towards the, the short-term rental ordinances. So, yes, November 7th is the, the planning commission meeting. I know there was a public announcement. Are the, is the zoning amendment readily available? I know people can go to city hall to look at it, but is there a way to provide it sooner online versus waiting until the packet comes out?
The zoning ordinance amendment for the, the STR?
Yes, for the public notice.
I'm not sure if it's readily available right now, no.
Well, the public notice said it was available at city hall.
I think we were waiting for it to come back from Mr. Bloom, but I'll have to check, check with Kelly. I've not talked to her today, so.
Okay. For our, our regular, our, the regulatory ordinance, we had talked about, I had inquired about complaints that staff has taken because those were not included in the Granicus Report. Is there a way to get that information about what complaints staff have received from residents on short-term rental?
I'm not sure which complaints that staff have received that we are not included in there. I do know that I did, we did have a lady come to the door, to the counter, who did want to make a complaint about a short-term rental, but she couldn't tell us the address. And quite honestly, I can't really do much with that. I can't, can't take a vague house color in some general area of the city. But that was the only complaint that I'm, that I'm aware of. Is there anything that you can share that I'm, I'm missing here?
Yeah, so I've had a couple of residents contact me and I can provide that to you. I don't have the addresses right at.
Sure.
I don't have the addresses right at my finger point.
Based on that, I did want to let you know that from a, from a perspective of administrating the staff and of course administering the STR hotline, the Granicus hotline is meant to be there as a tool for the public who have, you know, who can reach out to these local property owner, local agents and/or property owners to rectify a situation that has come up. And I think that has been very, very helpful. I myself have used the hotline and found it to be incredibly helpful and resourceful. I am concerned that this is a tool for us, but the staff doesn't have a way to enter in a complaint to the Granicus hotline from a backend. So it has to be entered in from a complainant. Moreover, I do know people are concerned about, you know, whether or not they should put their name on things. I think that we still want to be responsive. So if we're getting complaints through the hotline, we're going to share them with the property agents and/or the owners, however they, that's been set up. But if there isn't a complainant, there cannot be a ticket issued.
So if someone calls and talks to Kelly Tungate or Megan?
I've directed my staff to now inquire, make sure that if they have a complaint, it's got to go through the hotline so that we are tracking those.
So city staff is no longer taking?
We are not, no.
And when did that start? When did you?
Just recently.
Okay, so complaints made in the last month may not have been directed to Granicus.
I'd have to go back and check and see when I made that. But if we've received something over the summertime that is just, and I got to tell you, it's got to be something actionable, just not a vague complaint. I'm not sure where those would have come from, but I'm happy to look at them. But again, these have to be actionable complaints, not that they were upset with maybe a decision by a quasi judicial body or anything like that.
No, no, these were actual complaints of a short-term rental property that now would be moot because rental is, has subsided significantly.
Like I said, the STR hotline is there to be a tool to be, to give immediate relief.
No, that's fine. Regarding the ordinance amendments, you know, as I've been reviewing things and also looking at other jurisdictions, it just appears that we could potentially have more robust ordinances and trying to have, I know that there was a concern about the, these registrations being a zoning use and running with the land. And I know that there was a desire that they start being regulatory. And I appreciate the established use from permits that have been properly granted and that have established their use by December 31st, 2018. I would, I'll provide comments to you, but I would like to, I would like guidance from legal counsel of trying to have all future permits granted. That would be through the regulatory and not through the zoning. I mean, all the jurisdictions up and down the shoreline appear to be moving towards granting these registrations through the regulatory ordinance so they don't get land use. And I know that that was a key concern by many. And I'm just concerned that they, we could have a more robust.
You're talking about all new STRs issued?
Correct. Correct. And then, for the new zoning ordinance that is coming before us, you said on November 18th?
That's correct.
So, you know, in, at the planning commission level, there was a, three pages or so of a table that identified where there had been substantive changes. As you know, it was an overhaul, complete rewrite. There was no tracked changes. So there wasn't a clear demarcation of what was excluded, what was deleted and what was added. That would have resulted in too large of a document is the reason given for that. And this table was a compromise to identify substantive changes. However, since that meeting, since the public hearing, I continue to identify areas that should be, have, should have been identified as substantive. For example, in the CBD district, the parking requirements. Currently, the first residential unit does not have to have a parking space, but the new ordinance actually requires a parking space for every residential unit. The parking requirements for short-term rentals is different. It's currently based on the underlying zoning district. In the new one, it's two parking spaces, which would be significantly different for CBD.
I don't have that in front of me.
And this, excuse me. This discussion is to receive an update on the priorities.
Correct. And she said the new zoning ordinance will be at November 18th. Will that have an updated chart of what changes have occurred between the current zoning ordinance and the new ordinance as other items are identified?
I can't speak directly to that chart, but I do know that there have been some updates that have been, that we're waiting for Williams Works to complete before that comes up here because I understand there was a robust discussion on that. And we're trying to make sure that it's complete to meet the planning commission's recommendation to city council.
I'm going to see if anybody else has any other questions.
No, that was the last.
Joe?
Yeah, I'd like to dovetail off of what Mary's saying. I think it is extremely valuable request that the biggest complaint from residents, the two biggest are, we have too many short-term rentals and they're in the wrong places, meaning residential neighborhoods. We are hamstrung by this zoning ordinance that we can't take property away from someone. If you have a short-term rental, you get to pass it on. Fair enough, that's what we're living with. But if we can go forward while we're working on the zoning ordinance right now and short-term rentals, this would be the ideal time to add that all future PUDs, personal business, all of them become part of regulatory. And under regulatory, that puts us now and future city councils in charge how they want to do it. The other complaint that residents have is that they're in the wrong places. Some areas are fine with more short-term rentals. Some areas want less. If we can get this under the regulatory, that gives us the ability to put overlays and do just that. It would be a game changer going forward if we could do this.
Any other questions?
About priorities.
About priorities?
Questions about priorities.
Do you have any?
I do not.
Okay. We are moving on. Thank you. The city council will receive an update from Public Works Director Dana Byrd.
Hello, good evening. Thanks for having me here tonight. Wanted to update council on several things we have ongoing at Public Works. September and October are a big seasonal shift time for us. So that is in full swing over there. Wanted to share just a couple reminders with the community. We did start leaf pickup services last week and that's going to go through December 12th, weather permitting. Just a reminder for folks to not get their stick piles sorted in their leaf piles. And if they can keep their leaf piles clean, that helps us with our equipment, helps to streamline our services. So we really appreciate that. Helps us provide service to the community. Also, if you can help watch for clogged storm drains this time of year, it's the time of year where a lot of things tend to plug things up. And the more people can clean out the catch basin by their house, it's helpful to us or let us know. We also get a lot of requests for winterizing irrigation and plumbing where a resident might have a private contractor come to their house, want to winterize some things. So just a friendly reminder that only the public works staff are permitted to tinker around in your meter pits. So please give us a call there. We don't want to have folks subject to fines if we discover tampering's done. That's really to ensure compliance with state regulations. So if anybody's out there winterizing their plumbing or their plumber's going to be winterizing it, please give us a call. We'll do the part that's in the meter pit. Dykeman Bridge has operation changes starting on the 27th. So starting, I'm sorry, ending on the 27th. So starting on the 28th, the bridge will be open by request only. Want to thank our seasonal bridge staff for another great season there. And for folks after the 28th, after-hours calls should just be made to the information center and give us about 12 hours' notice. Also, we're starting tomorrow with some more asphalt repairs around town. So we're going to have patching crews going around town this week and we'll probably have another round of it before November 15th when the asphalt plant's closed for the year. So we are doing our best to keep up with the number of patching that occurs throughout the community. We appreciate everybody's patience with that. I know it's no fun to live with an asphalt, open gravel area in front of your house. But we have to do those in batches, try and make it as economical as possible to spend folks' road dollars there. So a couple other updates. We were proud to serve as one of the departments in the Touch a Truck event. That was my first Touch a Truck event. And it was really cool to see the staff at Public Works interacting firsthand with the community. I'm not out there every day with them. They're often out there interacting with the community on a daily basis. So this was really a cool opportunity, at least selfishly for me, to see my staff interacting with all the kids and residents and everyone getting to see the cool equipment and kind of talk about their joy and what they do and sharing part of their tasks with the community. So it was a really neat event to see. October 6th was Public Power Week in Michigan. So South Haven is one of 40 municipal public power utilities in the state. I had the opportunity to go to a conference recently, interact with some of those other 40 public power utilities and really got a sense of the pride and the value that those folks who run the electric utilities for those communities have in their own community. And we have that same thing here in South Haven. So that's really a special thing to be part of. So I do want to extend a thank you to our line crews and staff who do provide some of the most reliable power in Michigan for South Haven. We had a couple events since I last came and spoke with you. We had a ribbon cutting at the skate park, which was a really neat event where a lot of folks were coming out and skating. I know the mayor attended that and got some good coverage in the local paper. And so I think we're excited to see the park open. I hung up my board many years ago, probably when I was 12. But if you're still into skateboarding, get out there and, you know, do what you can. It's all set up. It's got a lot of neat features in the park now and I think a lot of folks are happy that that's open. Quick update on news from the Sewer and Water Authority. So we had a big event September 30th, our groundbreaking ceremony. Really caught a lot of traction with that. We're excited because it really stresses the significance of the investment that's being made in the South Haven community. So we had the Director of Eagle, Michigan's Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, as well as the State Director for USDA Rural Development, who helped provide some of the funding. They were glad to come that day and speak on behalf of their agencies and the coordination and support that it took to help us get those projects funded. And it really stresses the significance of that investment. So if, you know, some of you folks are aware, but there's a $42 million capital investment being made in our water and sewer infrastructure right now. And about half of that, or $20 million, is in grant funding. So we do have loans associated that, that we do have to pay off after time. But every capital dollar that's going into that, we're getting half of it funded in grants. And that's a big deal. It's a big deal for the community. There's going to be a lot of activity happening in the next three years because we do intend to spend that money over the next three years in lead line replacements, new elevated storage tank, and a variety of other projects going around. So if anyone has any questions about that, they can feel free to contact me. I'd be happy to talk more about it. We do have, for the water system, we're going to be sending out two rounds of letters to all the water customers. One letter is kind of an introductory saying information about the capital investment that's happening and to give people a heads up about what the second letter is. So we just had to submit a report to the state of Michigan. Every water system in the state had to submit this report that says, here's what we know about your individual water service line. So they call this the Complete Distribution System Material Inventory. And that is up on Schaus's website right now. So if people are wondering what we know about their service line, they can go up there, look up the material by service address. And then we're required by the state to send out another letter to folks, letting them know, do we know they have a lead service? Do we know it's a galvanized pipe that was previously connected to lead? Or do we not know at this point? And I will tell you, there's still a lot of information we don't know about service lines. We're actively working through verifying all of those. But part of our big capital project is we're going to work with Five Star Energy Services as a contractor. We have a large sum of money, half of its grant, to verify the rest of the service lines in the community and replace up to 2,100 lead service lines if we find that many. So that's going to be an ongoing effort. But we did have to meet this milestone with the state of Michigan to say, here's what we know about everything. And a lot of it is still going to be an unknown. But for the known information, we'll get letters out to people who, so they know what their service line is. So we'll be sending those letters out over the next several weeks. Let's see, other updates I had here. I know with that, it was great to kind of take a breath and celebrate all the accomplishments we've had in securing this funding and to kick off construction. But we are actively still planning on future needs of our infrastructure. We still have quite a few things in our sanitary sewer system and our aging water infrastructure that we're beginning the next stages of planning for. I know we have a lot of 100-year-old pipes and water mains in the ground. And sometimes, as folks will see, we notice a boil water advisory or we have a water main break and then we have trouble turning the valve off. That's because a lot of our infrastructure is old. And so we're planning that, we're planning the next rounds of that. And that's been built into our rate structure for several years, knowing that we're going to have to continuously renew a lot of our infrastructure. So we are working, working hard on that. And yeah, I guess I just, last thing I had, I wanted to give a shout out to our staff who've been out on the Grange making repairs all day. We did have a boring strike in that area. And so we had some water main leaking repairs that needed to happen there. And they've been out since 7:00 AM and I think they worked till about 8:00 or 9:00 PM tonight trying to get some of that buttoned up. So with that, take any questions you all may have.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions?
I had to set up comment. I want to circle back to leaves. And you were mentioning that the leaf trucks are out now, we love that. And then go to the sixth. And for people, keep, you said, keep the sticks out and to the curb and not in the street because of the storm drains.
Yep.
I'm just repeating for any listeners so they make sure they get that.
Yeah, yeah.
But then also, sometimes we get the snow early and then when the snow comes early, we often send them back out in the spring. Is that correct? To patch up some of those missed areas?
Yeah, yeah, I think we would try and provide the same service we would in previous years with that.
Okay. I thought that's what we did and just want people to know that.
I'll also add that if it dries out, we can send it out in between intermittent winter, snowings, we often do that. We have to make sure it's dry because those, the leaves do bind the machine up and we have to clean it out pretty rigorously.
Sounds good.
On the crack sealing, how do you determine where to start? What street?
Like which streets to start? So our engineering department will review kind of what streets have been crack sealed the past few years. And then we have various maps that we're looking at throughout town. So we kind of set a budget amount each year and look at, you know, what areas did we do previous years and try and keep that kind of on a three-year rotation. We did miss our spring rotation because we had a lot of other things going on. And so this fall rotation was a little bit more than what we normally do.
Okay. Mary?
First, I think that accolades go to you and your team. You didn't express how quickly the grants went through. My understanding from being at the groundbreaking is they were rapid speed. You guys set the record for how quickly it went through.
Yeah, with the USDA application, they, their administrative staff and our staff really did a heavy lift with all the consultants that we had on board and all of our legal counsel to really make that happen. But don't get me wrong, the community's been working on this for several years before I got here. The original applications for some of this grant funding from the state, I think, go back three or four years from now. So, but yeah, it was, it was an exciting time.
Some heavy lifting. Also, I understand this Wednesday at 9:30, Aaron has coordinated a meeting with people to walk the cemetery looking for veterans' graves.
Okay, I would have to get more information from Aaron on that because I'm not super familiar with that.
Yeah, so my understanding, he's working with American Legion, so thank you.
Okay.
So thanks to Aaron.
I will pass that along.
Kudos to Aaron. For the leaf pickup, I was just curious. I noticed that they were out on Sunday. Is that going to be routine? I mean, many of the leaves haven't fallen yet.
I think it's important to note that we typically, we do have two leaf trucks, but we've had one truck that has been, we've seen some issues with it that we can't seem to get fixed. So because we have just the one, we are going to be running it seven days a week. Typically, we do take Sundays off, but to main, to keep ahead of the leaves because once they calm down, they're coming down at once. We have been talking about having that just run at least a little bit on the weekends.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that'll continue throughout the season. There's a manufacturer's issue getting a circuit board replaced for the other truck.[1785.32] And so we have one truck. So we're kind of spreading out the timeframe, making them manageable for staff.
It makes more sense now that I know we're down to just one truck versus two. I just didn't understand, especially because there's still a lot of leaves on the trees. I didn't understand why it would be on Sunday. But if we're down to one truck, that makes sense. So thank you for that explanation.
George?
A real quick question. Looking at the report, you guys are doing a lot of good work, so thank you for that. One thing I didn't see that I've seen in the past, we had gotten some kind of grant or something for a couple new electric vehicle chargers. Do you know status on that? Is it still ongoing or?
Yeah, it's still ongoing. There isn't a lot happening with that at the moment. You know, the state of Michigan issued their press release, and we've been, had a few meetings with Ready Charge, who is one of the recipients with us, to get those implemented. But that's taken some time, so I really don't have many updates on that. But it is still ongoing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Wendy?
Mine is not a question, but just a comment. When I am scrolling through your project status update, it is overwhelming how much stuff that you guys handle. And I'm just in awe that you are doing all of these things for the city. So thank you to you and your team for keeping us going.
Well, thank you. I'll pass that along.
Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Now it's time for public comment. Citizens in the audience will-
15A minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mary. Okay, 15A. And this is for changes to the minutes of item A on the consent agenda.
Yes, so I had provided on Friday, proposed amendments to the minutes for August 7th. Apologize for my handwritten note saying, I'm sorry, I said August. October 7th, and inadvertently wrote October 5th. On page two of four, and the page references to the page numbers of the minutes, not to the page numbers of the agenda packet for clarification. In the one sentence, council discussed this form, this from their last meeting, et cetera. So it would strike, discuss this from their last meeting, and have, and then insert has. And then after 12, insert with flexibility, consistent with discussions at the August 19th, 2024 City Council meeting. And that's based on reviewing the video of August 19th at 2 hours and 20 minutes and the meeting of October 7th at about 51 minutes, 50 seconds. On page three, at the top sentence, it would have, would strike on removing reunions, comma stating, quote, loud, unquote, parties rather than, quote, lawn, quote, comma. And after and, insert include, and striking including. On page three of four, the first full paragraph. After the sentence, Hozier inquired if council would prefer to incorporate the zoning ordinance language, insert concerns were expressed with how the zoning ordinance changes parking requirements like in the CBD zoning district and in other ways. And then at the end of the paragraph, insert council members expressed the need for clarity and less discretion to the zoning administrator regarding parking. And last on, the sentence, council members shared their last thoughts and opinions on the draft language to give staff direction for subsequent draft to be presented, inserting comma, including comma, but not limited to, comma, what should be in the zoning or code ordinances with a request for guidance from legal counsel.
First of all, Robert's Rules of Order states that minutes are a record of what was done at the meeting, not what was said. So my opinion is that rules out the page three of four where it says concerns were expressed and council members expressed because that's not an action.
So that is no different than council would like to see drafted language. So these minutes do include what council expressed.
Right, that's Robert's Rules of Order states that the minutes are a record of what was done at the meeting, not what was said.
Well, if you had given me those comments ahead of time, I might have been able to come up with something. I did provide these about 11, I provided these on Friday.
Well, you have the book.
So as I said, it also says council members shared their last thoughts and opinions, which is also would be, need to be removed according to your opinion.
Okay.
So, you know, the minutes are not directly consistent with the Robert's Rules, it appears. The drafter has discretion. And when that discretion is used, then other items get included to ensure that the minutes are accurate with regard to what happened, especially with regard to a top priority. And where amendments at the December, I'm sorry, at the October 7th meeting incorrectly looked at occupancy of 10 when the previous meeting had occupancy of 12.
Okay, so we're removing the two changes from page three of four?
Point of order. I would put it up for a vote by city council of which amendments to accept or not accept.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have questions or comments right now?
I guess I have a question. Just kind of looking back at the first and second one, those seem to be factual changes or like kind of corrections? Is that, am I reading those right?
Yes, so the minutes from the August 19th meeting did not discuss all the, did not present all the topics that we discussed. And so this proposed amendment is to clarify that, like at the August 19th meeting, at the October 7th meeting, we concluded that 12 would be the maximum occupancy, not 10.
Okay, let's vote on the first one. It says, one notable change includes lowering the maximum occupancy from 12 to 10 and removes the provision adding two persons per finished floor. And then removing, council discussed this from their last meeting and have. And it would read as council has determined the preferred number is 12 with flexibility, consistent with discussions at the August 19th, 2024 City Council meeting. That's the part that's proposed for a change. Okay. Let's do a roll call. If you, and the question is, do you support this change?
I don't currently have a second on this motion. So are we?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so are we seconding all of the amendments as a whole? Are we taking all the amendments separately?
We're taking one at a time.
Okay, so for the first amendment only, moved by Mary, seconded by Reeser. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Kate, did you have a question?
I do. I know the first one says, you know, with flexibility, consistent with discussions at the 8:19, 2024 City Council meeting. But the 8:19 minutes don't refer to this. So I guess what's the point of adding that?
As I had indicated, the minutes for the 8:19 were very general. And this just confirms that in two consecutive city council meetings, that the vote was to set the maximum at 12.
With flexibility?
With flexibility.
Okay.
Are we ready? Okay. Arnold?
No.
Hosley? Yes.
I'm going to pass for a minute.
Just a minute. We're going to stop. We're going to give you time to vote.
Okay.
Well, I wasn't at the last meeting, so this is kind of difficult for me to know what is right. So I don't know.
Point of order. A member has the right to pass and think about it while the other members vote.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
I need to pass.
Okay, so I will go back to Onuki then.
Joe Arnold? Or Arnold has already voted?
I voted first.
I'm sorry.
I'm waiting for Onuki, and then I'll go back to Wilkins and then Brown.
Then yes.
Okay, Wilkins?
Yes. Yes.
And Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay. Council ultimately agreed to leave the clause as in, in removing, unremoving reunions stating loud parties rather than lawn and include language that permits these activities if the owner is present. So that would be, the council ultimately agreed to leave the clause as is and include language that permits these activities if the owner is present. Is there a motion for that?
I would move for that.
Can I ask a question first?
Oh, let's get a second first. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
Okay, so my question is, when we discussed this, the issue was, do we want to allow short-term rentals to be able to have parties, weddings, all those different activities? And I thought I was misquoted, but maybe not. But I am absolutely against that. And as a backup, I had a resident nicely send me stuff from Airbnb and another company that absolutely don't allow parties and activities like that. And then another resident sent me her contract that when she rents it out, they do not allow parties and that type of thing. And to me, this is one of those that go absolutely contrary to what residents want. They do not want outdoor parties. They do not want noise. So I'm 100% against that. So I just want to-
You're opposed to this change then?
No, I just want to make sure the change we're making keeps that. And then says you can have it when the owner's here.
And Joe, we're not actually changing anything. We're just trying to agree on the minutes.
Then we're keeping it the way it was-
We're not changing anything. We're just agreeing on the minutes.
Okay.
But the change is to say we keep it as is, but allow those activities when owner occupied.
Yes. And that was your point. You said at one point, I don't know if it was the last meeting or prior, prior to that, you said, well, I like to have parties occasionally. You're trying to tell me I can't have a party at my own home. And the point was, no, if you are having it as a homeowner, you can have a party anytime you want because most people that own a home keep it under control and even tell their neighbors. So homeowners can have parties, weddings on their front lawn, whatever they need to do, but not short-term rental people because that's not what they're intended to. That's for housing only.
Okay.
Can I make that clear for all that?
Yep. Any other discussion? Okay, we're voting.
Okay. Arnold?
No.
Hosley? Yes. Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
And Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
Moving on, section, this is page three of four regarding, Mary wants to add concerns were expressed with how the new zoning ordinance changes parking requirements like in the CBD zoning district and in other ways. In another addition, council members expressed the need for clarity and less discretion to the zoning administrator regarding parking. Is there a motion to support those changes?
I'll make a motion to support the changes.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Again, as you said, Madam Mayor, this is just a discussion on what we talked about. It's not really needed. I'm just, whatever we need to do to get through this.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, roll call please.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley? Yes. Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
And Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
And the last one?
Two more? Just one?
Council members expressed the need for clarity and then-
Oh, yeah.
That was in the first, that was in what we just did.
Okay. Oh, that's tied into this?
You read both of them at the same time.
Right.
So we're just on the last one.
Right. Okay, the last change is council members shared their last thoughts and opinions on the drafted language to give staff direction for a subsequent draft to be presented, adding including but not limited to what should be in the zoning or code ordinances with a request for guidance from legal counsel.
Move to amend?
Is there a support? Any discussion? Okay, roll call?
Arnold?
No.
Hosley? Yes. Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Wilkins?
Yes.
And Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
Now we are at public comment. Citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda.
Don't we now have to approve the amended minutes?
Oh, yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, now, public comment. For people in the audience about items not on the agenda, you have up to five minutes.
I'm George E. Bright, and I live at 214 Superior Street. Tonight, I would like to share with the city council what is happening in my neighborhood, my ward, and what will be the legacy of the 2024 city leadership. In the time we've been permanent residents, we have seen changes in the community that do not enhance the quality of life and take away from the features of South Haven as stated in the 2018 master plan. Here are three goals of that master plan, and I quote, maintain existing height and lot coverage requirements in identified neighborhoods. Analyze impacts of additional regulations for limiting size and height for new constructions on lots previously occupied by a dwelling. Two, provide for a diversity of housing options to include a wide range of demographics, in particular, plan for areas of housing known as the missing middle, which may attract a wide range of income earners. Three, incorporate design principles that ensure a character consistent with the existing or desired character of the city of South Haven. What I see is this, a deepening division between permanent residents and out-of-state persons who mainly want to profit off of South Haven. Example one, a short-term rental- Example one, a short-term rental house next door was bought by a land investor for $500,000. Three years later, it was sold for $750,000 with no improvements, a quarter of a million-dollar profit. Example two, the owner of a short-term rental across the street saw what profit could be made, so it was sold for over a million dollars. Example three, around the corner on Maple Street, a tear-down house was replaced by a structure with seven bedrooms and six bathrooms and a price tag of $1.6 million. Example four, the empty lot next door is now having a house built, and when we asked the owner how many bedrooms it will have, the owner said four. So by checking the builder's plans, we could see four bedrooms and this strange room labeled bunk room. When I grew up and slept in a bunk bed, the place where it was was called a bedroom. To top it off, there's a full bathroom in the basement with two possible bedrooms for that bathroom. To pay for this structure, oh, pardon me, so the four-bedroom structure probably is now a seven-bedroom one. To pay for the structure, the owner will undoubtedly file for a personal short-term rental certificate. How many cars and trucks will arrive next door to fill those seven bedrooms? Well, E. Bright, you must just have a hatred for out-of-town, short-term rental owners. Now, I talk with neighbors who have second homes in South Haven as I walk around the block. We discuss gardens and the migration of monarch butterflies. I encourage them all to take advantage of everything South Haven has to offer. So what is the source of these examples of outside persons making obscene profits in South Haven? My conclusion is it starts with the city leadership and the city government. City leadership, by lack of action, is driving a wedge between permanent residents and the people transforming Superior Street and Ward One. In conclusion, I go back to legacy. What does city leadership want to be the legacy for the future of South Haven? Does the master plan of 2018 matter? Will the city management continue to ignore goals of the 2018 master plan by handing out building permits for seven-bedroom houses? Given the fact that the number of permanent residents has declined by 35%-
Give one minute.
-in the last 34 years, does city leadership want to change this alarming trend? Here are consequences of the current lack of leadership. Schools with fewer children will close. The number of doctors in a smaller South Haven will decrease. The vitality of South Haven will diminish as the median age continues to climb beyond 60 years. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you for having patience with me. Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I don't know why I'm being chose to bring up issues, but I, um, I agreed to do that. Couple of people did not feel comfortable, and one had to, had to leave out after about two hours or so of waiting. But the first, the first concern that was brought to my attention that I, that I make mention of on tonight is that there are growing group of residents on the south side of South Haven is concerned with the process that we are using to select the new chief. Natalie had done just a tremendous job and would build a rapport with people, community of color on the south side, and they are afraid that we're gonna make a step back. And, um, I, this is their quote, that, um, not very many that's in the department now bought into her vision of trying to build a rapport with the, uh, community of color, and that was very important, so they want accountability on that level, and I, I said that I would mention that as well. And so, Kate, I know what you have to do to try to reach out to leaders and community, community activists from that, from our community. I, I would suggest that we try to include them in this process. So, uh, there was another concern also that was brought up at the senior citizen complex, and that was, they, the person thought that it's a stall tactic when it comes to handling this, um, ordinance for STRs. And the person was concerned that we're, uh, council and staff or whoever is putting it off until the board changes in, I guess, the next year. So, um, I'm hoping that that's not the case. I'm hoping that that's not the case. And the last concern was back to the police office, uh, chief of police position, they were concerned with one of the new, um, position that one of your officers received. Um, I don't know if it's temporary, they don't know if it's temporary, but, um, their concern is that that particular officer, um, does not try to build, have not, under Natalie's leadership, tried to build a rapport with the, um, people of color, and many times when they've been on the scene, that officer has been the one that escalate the situation. So they, they don't want apparently that type of behavior in those type of positions. It gives them too much authority. And so, I don't know who's been hired, I don't know who's in these positions right now, I'm just the middle person. I agreed to be the middle person because everybody's not comfortable standing up here speaking, so. And my last, um, point would be to Kate, and I know I probably could ask this offline, out of, outside of this meeting, who do I talk to in regards to, um, headstones? My, my parents' headstone is sinking. And, um, the headstone is tilted, so I don't know, who do I talk to?
I can give you Aaron Preve, he's, he's also our cemetery sexton, he's park superintendent and cemetery sexton.
All right.
If you do his contact.
Again, council and staff, those are not my comments, those are comments of others that wanted me to bring it forth. Now, this is my comment, I do have concerns about the process, and I would like myself to be involved and others to be involved in selecting or helping select or let, you know, helping select the next chief. Natalie, again, did such a tremendous job in making people feel comfortable throughout this whole community, to be able to talk to someone and know that the police department is there for your best interest, and even in bad times, they not there to escalate the issue and quickly handcuff, I watched her grow, I watched her grow, and so, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, city manager's comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Dana kind of mentioned some of this, but we've got some paving projects tomorrow, Monroe Street. I know there's been some concern about that patch of the 200 block of Monroe, it will be paved tomorrow. There's also going to be paving on Maple Street, both those notices are up on the city's website and uploaded to the city's document center. This weekend, we'll have a number of Halloween festivities, we have the, um, the trunk-or-treat that I believe is happening at LMC, I think there's one inside the high school gym on Friday, the 25th, I also believe there's one at St. Paul's. On Saturday, the 26th, there is the Downtown Paw Parade, the Trick or Treat, and the Ride of the Heavens Horsemen, that's all gonna be taking place downtown. And of course, by resolution, our trick-or-treating will be occurring on Tuesday, October 31st, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM, we'll have lots of officers out making sure everyone's being safe. We did have a planned water outage to replace some leaking valves in the Grange Willow area, the water is back on, but of course, we have a three-day approximate boil water notice, as soon as that's able to be lifted, we will be notifying residents via NEXL, and of course, a press release. I wanted to thank Jim Hettinger and staff for the work on the Overton RFP, I know we've got a lot of work that has been gone into that, happy to get that one moving and out the door and posted. I also wanted to thank interim chief, Pat Carlato, for his organization of retired chief Natalie Thompson's, uh, retirement party, I think it was well-attended, lots of folks came out, it was nice to see her, and of course, see some old faces as well. And then, lastly, I did want to reach out to George, Jeff, and Mary to reconvene our code of conduct committee and get that going, because I know we'll have to have a, a work session with council, and those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. City council members, we'll start with you, Latisha. Oh, questions?
Kate, can you give us any update on, um, the police chief process? So, I know the advertising's done, when would we get the shortlist?
I'm not sure when we're gonna get the shortlist, I do, Kim and I do have a meeting with Mr. Holt this week, um, and as I, as I've said, there will be, there will be stakeholders that will help, that, of the candidates that are shortlisted, I do not have a list of those people right now, but when I have better updates, I will be including those to council.
But will city council have an opportunity to identify stakeholders to be included? Will those members come before us to-
I'm, I will, I will be interested in hearing who you have to say, but I, again, I'm not, I'm not certain who's gonna be on those, on those stakeholder committees, um, I do wanna make sure that we don't have an unwieldy group of stakeholders, that we, everyone has time, it's not just that they get to come in and just sit in a meeting, but they have, that they have effective meetings, so that's still a work in progress.
But, so, um, I mean, those were due October 2nd or 3rd, somewhere in there. I guess I, I would request city council to consider directing the city manager to provide the city council with a list of members of, and who will be grouped with whom for the community interviews and a, and a timeline.
I, I would hesitate you to direct me to do anything at this point, because again, I haven't met with city Curtis Holt, and I know Kim's been a little bit in this process, so Kim, do you have anything to share?
Yes, so Kate and I are meeting with Curtis on Wednesday, he is going to be presenting us with a shortlist of candidates at that time. Curtis has also been working on identifying people who could sit on the interview committee, law enforcement officers from throughout the state who have extensive experience doing interviews of the such. And so, we're gonna have that conversation with Curtis on Wednesday, and then we'll be able to provide additional information to council after that.
Okay, would we, um, so I appreciate the effort. It's, it's wonderful that all this has been happening, but I, I continue to hear similar to Bishop Wilkins, and I thank him for bringing this up, ensuring that there is a, a broad base of people involved in these processes. We are a very diverse community, we have specific issues, Chief Thompson undertook a Herculean effort to ensure integration and, and, and involvement, and I just want to make sure that those who were involved in that process are intimately involved in this process. I appreciate that it can appear to be, I don't remember the exact word you used, Kate, but a bumpy road, but, um, like I said, those were not the words you used, I cannot remember, you said you want them to be effective, and yes, I do want them to be effective also, but that doesn't mean ignoring people who have differing opinions, in fact, diversity and inclusion is all about including people with different opinions.
I'm, I guess I'm confused as to where the ignoring part is coming in, I, like I said, the process is evolving, and Curtis and I and Kim are having a meeting later this week, so I guess the answer is I don't have much to share, but we will, we will be sharing to council what we know when we know it.
Well, I, I would like to have a little more definitive timeline because of this coming up. Because I believe you had, well, I believe you had said that it would be filled by the end of the year, I would like to see it filled sooner, if at all possible.
I'm not sure how that's possible, if you are talking about a, 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 a large degree of stakeholders, that's gonna take time to coordinate a lot of schedules, so again, we're trying to work with that, we also know the holidays are coming up, that is, the goal is to fill it by the end of the year, but I do wanna be careful about over-promising and under-delivering, so I don't typically do that, I, like I said, when I learn more, I'm happy to share that, I do know a number of people have reached out, very interested to serve on the stakeholder committees, to vet that, it is very apparent to me, it's very apparent to Kim, we live in a very diverse, um, community, and we're trying to incorporate that as part of it, but I'm not willing to commit to anything at this point without knowing more from Curtis.
And if I may, I believe the contract that we, that was approved by council for the MML, it has the interview committee, and then following that, the interview committee recommends a finalist, and that's when we do the community stakeholder meetings, that was my understanding of the contract. I could review it.
It had screening and shortlist phase, and then interview and selection phase was step four, and then five was final phase.
I'm confident about the process. Jeff?
Just to clarify, because we're kinda, you know, using some jargon, so would it be safe to say that Wednesday, you two and Curtis are meeting, and then you're gonna compile a shortlist, and so what you're doing is you're looking to see of everyone that applied, who's qualified, that's step one. And then step two, you're bringing in some law enforcement experts that would be vetting, and then you're bringing it forward to get community input, our input, that, does that sound like the process you're envisioning?
I would really like to see how this meeting goes with Curtis on Wednesday to see where we're at.
But does that sound close to what you had in mind?
Yes.
Thank you.
Based on what you hear, okay, good.
Thank you.
It's kind of an open-ended statement, but I remember six months or so ago, we had a gentleman come here and give us the EI training, it might even been last year, I thought he was very effective. And I asked a question, I said, you know, I've been on city council six years, and if I look around in this room, other than when somebody's being honored, that's a person of color, and other than Bishop Wilkins and Mickey coming here, you don't see a whole lot of diversity in this room, not a criticism, just an observation, how can we change it? And I remember the answer he gave me, he said, you have to keep inviting them, you have to go out of your way, and I know you're in personnel, you know this. My, my statement to you is, are we doing enough to invite the candidates that would represent DEI, and are we doing enough to make the community in the southern part of my ward feel like they are part of this process? Not a criticism of either of you, but I'm not telling you how to do it, I'm just saying, are we doing everything possible to, to get that accomplished? Because if we hire the right person, it will be great for the community, if we don't, this is a very small community that relies on the quality of its police, almost to the point I think we're a bit spoiled, we're so lucky. I don't wanna see that upset, so I'm just hoping that we're reaching out, and maybe we need to even speak to that gentleman to get any advice, that's not a criticism of you as HR person, but I just wanna see, get, get done where we are demonstrating DEI in this community with that most delicate of all positions, our police chief.
I take no criticism at all from you, Joe, not at all. As you know, this was contracted out to the MML, so we're kind of following their process, and so that's where I feel like we need to wait until Wednesday before Kate and I have additional information, because I don't feel like I have the information at this point to share with, with council.
Okay, thanks.
Can I just support what Joe said? I wanted to say something, but I think he worded it better than I could, so I think you'll do a great job, um, but yeah, I echo what he said.
Okay, any other questions for Kate?
Do you think you would have an update by our next meeting, that we could have this?
Well, I'll let you know, that is the hope, I, I can tell you, I am not planning on having a very heavy agenda for the fourth, I know that Megan's got a big day on the following day, so, um, if we do have something to share, um, again, we are trying to be transparent, keep this process moving, if we are able to share, we will.
I just remembered, this, Mary, this is being overseen by the Michigan Municipal League, so-
I, I understand that, and that's actually a concern, because they're not intimately familiar with our area and everything that- familiar with our area and everything that Natalie has overcome. And so that's why I want to ensure that the stakeholders who were intimately involved with that whole process, not only her interview, but helping her overcome and building, overcome barriers and building relationships among our diverse city are intimately involved in this process.
Yep, and he has met with people who stress that, and actually, he has a lot of good connections in our area, and he is highly recommended by other people. In fact, someone who grew up in South Haven highly recommends him.
Well.
Okay, we're moving on. Time for council comments. Letitia.
I'll be very brief. First, I want to say thank you to everyone who came out tonight, your input is valued. Secondly, I want to say thank you again to Ryan and his wife for the gift that they gave to the city, and I also want to say thank you to the city of South Haven for honoring my brother-in-law, the late James O. Wilkins, Jr. And I wanted to say, I don't know what's been on my mind, but I also want to say thank you to the mayor. I know we don't always agree, but I just wanted to say how I appreciate it. We have, they appreciated my husband at the church, pastor of appreciation of 19 years, and I didn't invite the mayor, but I looked out there and I saw her, and I was so touched, and again, I'll be very brief, and it just speak volumes of how she's trying to understand and build relationships with the south side, and it was just not our service. There's been other services that I've attended, and I've seen her there, and even clapping her hands, and I know in our service, we're Pentecostal, and we might get a little excited, and I just knew that the mayor was gone by that time, and I looked over, and she was still sitting there, clapping her hands, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you, it means a lot when, you know, you can, you know, I know you weren't probably raised Pentecostal, and it just means a lot that you take the time out to try to get to know people and understand the differences in this community, and I appreciate that.
Thank you so much. George?
I also want to thank everyone that was here today and people that tuned in to watch. Thank you, Ryan and Mandy, for your donations, very much appreciated, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment, again, like everyone's saying, thank you all for coming. I think it's so invaluable that we up here hear the residents' comments, and I know tonight in particular, there was a lot of discussion back and forth among city council persons, and it takes a lot of time, and it would have been a lot easier to cut right to the chase sometimes, but I really believe that this council's going to be effective. It is this give and take, it is these discussions, these sidebars, that make the difference so we can all eventually come together and have a better plan than if we all just quickly make a decision. So as painful as it seems even for me, because I'm a business guy, I get right to the point. I don't like to keep talking about something, but I think with this council and on these tough issues, housing and short-term rentals and lifeguard, we got to work through it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mary?
I too like, want to thank everyone who came and also submitted comments in writing. Thank you, Ryan and Mandy, for the generous donation. Hopefully, we'll never have to use it, but it's good to have as a safeguard. I also want to thank Shays for the fire safety event that they held, and the free dinner for the families, and the fun, informative activities, and the firebox showing that they had was just amazing to help people appreciate how quickly fire spreads. One thing that didn't get mentioned, October 23rd, this Wednesday at 7:00 PM, Historical Association of South Haven at the Hartman School at 3:55 Hubbard is having the Salem Witch Trials in Your Family Tree by Kim Rowcaster, so that should be very exciting. It's open to everybody, it's free, and I'd like to thank Bishop Wilkins for staying and talking on behalf of the residents in south of town, and truly appreciate your involvement. Thank you.
Wendy?
I would like to share my condolences with the Wilkins family, and then also congratulate the SHOUT volunteers that got their awards tonight, and thank Ryan and Mandy for their donation. Thank you.
My comments, the historical site of witch trials, very timely, that's great. I want to echo something Kate said, I want to thank Jim Hettinger and everyone that put together the Overton RFP. I want to thank Mandy and Ryan, Ryan kept getting top billing, Mandy and Ryan for their donation of the Emily. What else? Oh, something that Bishop Wilkins was mentioning, that, you know, he had heard from someone about a stall tactic, and Joe was just talking about the process, and he called it painful. And I know when we were talking about our goals, I, one of my priorities, when we're talking about our priorities, I expressed one of my frustrations is the pace. And unfortunately, it just does take time to get things done, and I always use for an example the splash pad, that when I first got on council and I was on Parks Commission, and they pitched a splash pad, awesome, and it was kind of the first of beach safety steps that we took was the splash pad. And everyone was in favor of it, no one was against it, but it still took six years to get done and cut the ribbon. So it just takes us time to get things done, and so you have to bear with us sometimes. I know there was a little pushback about the location at the end, but like I said, everyone was in favor of it, but it still took six years from start to finish to get that done, so bear with us, we're trying, and as Joe said, it's painful, but we are plugging and trying to get things done. Those are my comments.
Thank you. I want to thank, of course, Ryan and Mandy, thank you so much, you worked a long time on this, and you did not give up, so thank you for persevering and being so generous. I also want to thank our beach enforcement team, our attendants who patrolled every beach this summer, changed the flags, and monitored our swimmers and our peers, and thank you to Matt Day for supervising them. Because of their hard work, this was our second year, second summer with no drownings. In 2023, there were seven drownings in the state of Michigan, in Lake Michigan. Three were due to boat capsizing, one was a winter drowning, and three swimmers drowned in rough water, and in those cities of Manistee, Ludington, and Sawyer. This year, up to now, there were 11 drownings in the state of Michigan, in Lake Michigan. Four were due to boat capsizing, and seven were due to rough water. One was, they think it may have been a suicide, that was in St. Joe. The other drownings were in Manistee, Antrim County, Frankfurt, Ludington, Muskegon, and Ottawa County. So thank you for everyone who made this another safe summer, we appreciate you. And that's all I have. If there's no further business, we're adjourned. Thank you so much.